Okay, so if all the board members are here, I would like to call to order this most unusual annual board meeting, historically unusual. And we have a first item of business, which is actually to suspend our remote attendance policy under the auspices of the governor's executive order. So is there a motion that we do that?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, let's call the roll in seniority order. Roger Diggs.
Aye.
Ashonda Cunningham.
Aye.
Meredith Bumpthal.
Aye.
Nancy Del Coleman.
Aye.
And Michael Walker votes aye as well. So we have approved all attending remotely, which is normally actually against law, but the governor made it different. So at this point, I would like to turn the meeting over to our board secretary, Tim Bartlett, to hold the election of officers for the coming year.
Thank you, Michael. As you all know, it's as part of our annual meeting. It's time to do the election of officers for the 2021 year. The first position is for president of the board of the Urbana Park District. The nomination floor is open if there are names.
I'll nominate Michael Walker.
Michael Walker's name has been nominated. Are there any other additional nominations? Hearing no other nominations, is there any discussion or comments? Hearing no comments, it's time to move on to the vote. All those in favor of having Michael Walker serve as president of Urbana Park District Board signaled by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Michael Walker is elected as president of the board of commissioners for the Urbana Park District. And I believe I turn the meeting back over to the newly elected president.
Oh, thank you, Tim, and thank you fellow commissioners. That leads us then to the election of a vice president for the coming year. Open the nominations for vice president, is there?
I move to elect Commissioner Nancy Del Coleman as vice president.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there any discussion on the point? And hearing none of that, all in favor of Nancy Del Coleman serving as vice president? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that carries unanimously. We then move on to a slate of appointments. I think we have a set of slate before us tonight. Is there anyone wishing to make a motion that we to the slate of positions as laid out in appointments, item 3A?
I move to make the following appointments, board secretary Tim Bartlett, assistant secretary Allison Jones, board treasurer Richard Percival, attorney Matt Deering, board recorder Allison Jones, or designee of the business manager, auditor Martin Hood LLC.
Second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none by voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Hearing none, I believe that carries unanimously. We're now to item 3B, action to appoint a commissioner to the Urbana Parks Foundation. Is there a nomination for that?
I move to appoint Commissioner Roger Diggs to the Urbana Parks Foundation.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Are there any other suggestions?
Is that all right with you, Roger?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
All right. Any further discussion on the point? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, same sign? I hear no opposition, so I think that carries unanimously. Next, item C, action to appoint commissioners as UPDAC representatives. Nancy Del Coleman and Ashonda Cunningham have been so kind as to serve in that role the last year. You're willing to do it again?
Yep. Unless somebody else wants. Ashonda, are you willing to join?
I'll support you if I can.
Oh, sorry, I keep forgetting I have to push the button. That's great, okay.
I move to appoint commissioners Nancy Del Coleman and Ashonda Cunningham as UPDAC representatives.
And is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none opposed, that carries unanimously. We're now down to item 3D, action to appoint a representative to the Urbana Tax Increment Finance District Joint Review Board. And years past, Tim Bartlett and I have served in that capacity. I am certainly willing to do that again. Oh, yeah.
Well, I move to appoint Commissioner Michael Walker and Executive Director Tim Bartlett to the Urbana TIP Joint Review Board.
Okay, I believe I heard a second. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that carries unanimously as well. And that exhausts the agenda for the annual meeting. We've done our business for that meeting. And I will adjourn the annual board meeting. And at 7:10 PM, we are going to call to order the regular board meeting for the month of May of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. And again, our first item of business is an unusual one. We need to suspend our remote attendance policy in order for all the commissioners to attend remotely pursuant to the governor's executive order 2020-07. Is there a motion to do that?
So move.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, we should do a roll call vote, starting with Roger?
Aye.
Ashonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that carries unanimously, and we have suspended our normal remote attendance policy. Next item then is to accept the agenda. And I would ask for a motion to accept the agenda with adjusting the order of the new business item A to immediately after public comment. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously. So we are now ready to move on to public comment. And I guess at this point, we normally look out into the audience and see if there's anybody there wishing to make public comment. My presumption is that we do. Tim, do you have a way of queuing these up?
Yes, I believe Katie was gonna provide us some instruction, and people have been instructed and given information on how to access the Zoom meeting. Katie, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
Yeah, so for those that are wishing to speak to the board, if you could please push on the button at the bottom of your Zoom window that says participants, and then a new window will open up, a participants' window will open up on the right-hand side of your screen, and at the bottom, there's a button that says raise hand. So if you'd like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand now, and that way you'll be queued up, and we'll just call on each person one at a time, and we'll lower your hand after you've been given a chance to speak. We also have one phone-in participant. If that person would like to speak, just raise your hand by dialing star nine, and that will bring our attention to you, and we can unmute you in turn. So I'm gonna go ahead and unmute the first person that's wanting to speak, and that's Victoria Ford. So I'm gonna unmute.
Before anybody starts, before anybody starts, I think we need to lay out our general rules.
Yes. Yeah.
Go ahead and get to the hand raising, and then when you're ready, I'll unmute people.
Okay. Yes, our normal rules for this is we ask people wishing to speak to a meeting to give their name and address. And after that, they will have up to two minutes to address the board. So please try to keep your comments within the two-minute limit. Given the number of people we are expecting, I will be timing once people have identified themselves.
Okay, I'm gonna go.
I'd also like to mention that our policy is for the commissioners and staff not to respond. So we're just going to listen to everybody, but there won't, there won't be a response to the fact that that's just how we do things.
There won't be, there won't be a response tonight.
That's right. So none of us will speak to the issues raised plus or minus by any of the, any of the tonight speakers.
But Tim, am I correct that staff will be in touch with, with people who have commented?
Yes, anybody who, we receive comments, some of them had questions. So anybody that had questions, we would follow up and acknowledge. You know, that's sort of our practice to make sure that folks are, one, aware that we did hear them, we received their comments, especially with our Zoom format. And then lastly, we, I have received a few emails. I'll report at the end of the comment time, at least to name the folks that have sent emails. Their emails will be part of the public record as well. Okay, thanks.
I would just like to say as well, if you're having any technical difficulties and you're trying to get somebody's attention in the room, send Tim Bartlett an email at ta bartlett@urbanaparks.org. If you're unable to raise your hand for some reason, please let him know, and he'll check his email here at the end of the public comment time, and we'll be sure to unmute you as needed.
Okay, do we do we have a first person wishing to make comments at this point?
Yes. Okay, I'm unmuted. Victoria Ford, For Burnett Circle, Urbana, Illinois. This is my comment. The migratory bird treaty 16 USC 703-711 protects Canada geese, their nests and eggs. This federal law prohibits capturing or killing Canada geese outside a legal hunting season. The hunting season in Illinois begins October 26th. Presently, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service allows property owners to conduct certain controlled methods with the appropriate authorization. Most permits are issued to destroy nests or to oil and addle eggs. At qualifying sites, communities are issued federal permits for goose roundups. The meat is processed and donated to food pantries. I assume the UPD has received such permit, but I ask how has the UPD quantified the damage that the Crystal Lake Park has incurred due to the geese? Research has not found any significant health threat from goose feces. I have been searching for alternatives to killing the geese and goslings at CLP. The sources I have used are Audubon Society, the U.S. Humane Society, and St. Louis Geese Peace, believe it or not. Perhaps these resources have been tapped during your process of investigation. According to Geese Peace, the goal is to reduce the nuisance to an acceptable level. It is not possible, even if it were desirable, to eliminate geese from the community. So solutions need to address the specific conflicts and sites on which they are occurring, not attack all geese generally. There is no single quick fix that will resolve human- goose conflicts at every site, but well-designed integrated programs can resolve conflicts. Geese Peace.
Ten seconds.
Pardon?
You have 10 seconds remaining.
Oh my goodness, wow. An organization dedicated to building better communities through innovative, effective, and humane solutions to wildlife conflicts has developed an effective template that communities can adopt. This can greatly simplify your planning. And I have much, another two minutes. I have two more minutes?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Our rule is two minutes.
All right, so what I will do is send you all the information that I have researched, including the resources, websites, and proposals that might help in your decision-making.
Thank you very much for taking the time to address us.
Thank you.
Next.
Katie? I don't see any, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised, so if you'd like to address the board, please click the, Susan Parenti, are you waving?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I see you. I've unmuted you.
Okay, I also wonder whether people are having, like I just did, technical problems, and that's why people are not, I was not able to do, raise my hand, and I was not able to. So, okay, so my name is Susan Parenti. I live on Franklin Street. And was there a second question I was supposed to answer? No, okay.
Well, your name, and we know where Franklin Street is, so that's sufficient. Thank you.
For other people, that is a street that's actually in Crystal Lake Park. So I want to say the most brief thing. I have, in the last four days, since Victoria and I corresponded about this, and I first learned on Friday about the proposal of the charity, I forget the euphemism, but whatever it is, the idea of killing the geese. I have received 271 emails on just the topic of the geese and of the park district. Not, I'm not talking about the topics. I have been startled that this is such a hot and sensitive issue. And all these people, I've got people from Champaign that I don't know who they are, asking me what to do about the geese on Prospect. Some people totally disagreeing. So this is what I'm proposing. We need time. I don't want to be singled off by one of you. I want us as a group to discuss this. This is too big a proposal. And I know there is a logistical, which is that the geese will mate in June, and if you want to do the charity harvest, you want to kill them before then. But that does not trump, I beg your pardon, that does not lower the importance of our meeting. And I'll just say just a few little things. I don't see evidence for a lot of your assertions about the difficulty of the geese. I need to see evidence. I need to see how many times is there Facebook, is somebody filmed it? Second, the survey is an embarrassment. You have positioned the geese as a conflict, as dirty, et cetera. If that was a freshman in my class, I would give it an F. Third, had we seen the framing of the geese in the following way, because we are in 2020, in not only a pandemic, but in a potential recession, where our duty in this town is to find and create work. And had we seen in that survey, do you want to kill the geese, or could the geese become an opportunity for new and meaningful work? We would have seen a huge interest. Thank you. So I'm just putting in my pitch that I think we need another month to discuss this. The interest is too high. It'll leave a very bad picture if you just try to rush through. Okay, thank you.
Time is up. Thank you.
Oh, hi. My name is Nilu Fasham Bayadi. I live at 2609 Cherry Hills Drive in Champaign. I've lived at that address since 1990. And my family and I have been lucky enough to have a pond very near to us. And over the years, we have seen families of geese in, on the pond and also in the common areas. And they have been a source of joy and also an opportunity for my kids to feel that this is really what the nature is supposed to be. And they have developed empathy for other animals through that, which is very important. And another issue that really upsets me in addition to this plan to slaughter so many geese is that what kind of a message do we want to give to our children and our grandchildren that we can slaughter our way out of our problems and our inconveniences? This, this is really unacceptable. We do need more time, that's for sure. But also, there are, I mean, there are so many things to talk about, but the, the fact that this is a very brutal process does not at all makes it, it, well, whatever I say is that the fact that you are suggesting that it could be the flesh of these animals could be distributed among people who need it or want it, that's really very misconceived and ill-informed. This is the era of COVID-19. We know how human beings got COVID-19. It was through the earring of the.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Sure. So be careful what you are suggesting. You don't want to make people more I mean, sicker than they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
I'm unmuting Robin.
Hi, my name is Ron Pester. I live at 1209 West Oregon Street in Urbana. I think there's a crisis at Crystal Lake Park, but it's not the geese. It's the way the Urbana Park District is making its decisions. The plan to kill geese at Crystal Lake Park must be halted, and the Urbana Park District must reassess the situation with a mind toward including the community with more than just a poorly designed online survey. The survey is an insult to community governance and shared decision-making. Plans must be shelved for a summer charity harvest, a euphemism that not only obscures the act of killing, but also proposes that the UPD somehow helping poverty in Champaign County by committing an act of wanton violence. The tools are inherently contradictory. Geese in Crystal Lake Park are not the property of the city of Urbana, nor do they represent a threat to the public health and safety. To suppose that animal feces is an inherent risk is to suppose that wildlife itself is the problem. No one with that sort of opinion should be permitted to make policy on behalf of the public. When a public park includes water, wildlife will naturally be drawn to it. This is one of the pleasures of public parks with water. We have the opportunity to enjoy the outdoors alongside nature, not despite it. When I see large flocks of geese at the park, I feel comforted, not annoyed. The UPD should invite the public to engage in real substantive conversation about the mission of the park, the history of the geese's presence there, and the options for moving forward. This should take the form of a discussion, not a homemade survey designed to create the image of consent. The survey results are irrelevant to the issue of geese in the park because the survey itself lacked credibility. The act of killing that you are proposing has nothing to do with the public good or the public will. In fact, for those considering the problem, it's more appropriate to say you have no idea how the public feels about this. I strongly urge the UPD board to defer any decisions about the geese until a true measure of public opinion through conversation and dialogue is part of the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm unmuting Stuart.
Okay. Hi, I'm Stuart Levy. I live at 1108 Foley in Champaign. And I'm with the local, the Prairie Group with Sierra Club. I'd like to make several comments. One is I too am appalled by the survey and its focus on the worst possible characteristics of the geese and the description of the geese roundup and slaughter as a charity harvest. I mean, this is like straight out of 1984, and it okay. I'd like to make that point. I'd like to point out also that in, in killing the geese, you're emptying an ecological niche, and an empty niche will fill. So I see a couple of comments in the, in the packet, the board packet about this. One saying that this would affect a permanent reduction in the geese population, and the other that you could expect it to last seven to 10 years. I don't know what the basis for that is. You might have to do this much more often. The Humane Society of the United States gives recommendations, some of which the park district has already done in order to limit goose populations. But one thing that I haven't heard the park district addressing is the possibility of just making the, making the landscape less appealing for geese by having taller grasses near the, near the water or by growing grasses that are less tasty to geese. You know, I see a comment in, in the packet that says that if you were to vote this down today, that an alternative would be to turn the, to make a drastic change basically to the Crystal Lake Park and turn it into more of a forest preserve with wildlife viewing and so on. It shouldn't need to be that drastic of a change. It could still be very much a park that would be very much appealing to people doing ordinary things. My wife and I got married in Crystal Lake Park. We could, we could have had tall grasses by the lake when we did that at the lake house. So please don't just, please don't just go forward with a harvest assuming that this is the only, only remaining alternative. It is not the only remaining alternative, and the public has not yet had a chance to get, to give an honest response. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
I'm unmuting Morgan.
Hi, I'm Morgan Dirksen. I live on Country Club Road in Urbana, which is just within walking distance of Crystal Lake Park, and I use it almost every day, especially now that we're stuck at home. Really, the only time I get out is walking in the park. I really appreciate Crystal Lake Park, and I appreciate the signs that were put up to let everybody know about, you know, this, this proposition. And I think anybody who uses the park often saw those signs. I feel like I was able to give input if I wanted to. I'm really excited about the lake improvements and naturalization that's going to happen. And I think the charity harvest could be a really good and important part of, of the improvements that are going to happen, and I support the charity harvest. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
I see Patch Adams raising his hand, but there's two, there's at least one other person in front of you that wants to speak, so I'll, I'll unmute you in a moment. I'm unmuting Paul.
Hello. I'm Greg Springer, and I sent an email with my comments. I just wanted to tie in. I walked through Crystal Lake Park. I walk through Crystal Lake Park every day, twice a day for many, many years. I live a block and a half away on, on Wood Street. I didn't give, give that address before. And I too support the charity harvest. I think the geese are out of control. They are threatening. They will, will come at you and hiss at you and take over the sidewalk. And there's no place to sit because there are feces everywhere. So I just, because there were so many comments in the other direction, I just wanted to throw in my two cents in that way. Thanks.
Thank you for commenting tonight.
I'm unmuting Patch Adams.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Dr. Patch Adams. I've been a family doctor for 50 years. I moved here nine years ago to live at 122 Franklin Street, right in the park. I, I live with the sound of the geese and their presence. We live in a country where the number one selling drugs are antidepressants. Where if people really knew how to have a relationship to nature, they wouldn't need antidepressants. They would have nature. And the geese have been my friends every day since I've lived here. I can't go anywhere without seeing the geese and their wonderful kindness. And, you know, I just am curious how much dog poop outweighs bird poop in Crystal Lake Park? Since a lot of people walk their dogs there. These are gentle, beautiful animals. Birds are really unthreatening. I mean, if you approach their family and their little goslings, they might wish honk you away. I am sure huge numbers of local people are feeling better in their souls and lives because of these geese. They, I love how they walk across the street and show patience for the cars. And I am shocked that this is not seen by the people who are managing this park. It is an embarrassment to kill our friends. These are our friends. We made a little protest at the park today and there was no flipping off of our signs, but huge numbers of people throwing their thumbs up about what we were fighting for. And you can wager that these people are using the geese for their own peace of mind. Please understand that killing these geese is killing humanity.
Okay, thank you for your comment tonight.
I'm unmuting Karen now.
Hi, my name is Karen Medina. I also live at 1108 Foley in Champaign. I also have a degree in animal science from the University of Illinois. I think that there is a way that the people and the, and the park and the geese can all live together. And I do think that we can make some adjustments. I realize that the lake is used for fishing, but I think that if you build a waterway, there, you will get geese. You've eliminated the predators that would prey on the geese. And you've also cleared the landing path for the geese to land. And you've also cut the grass for the people and the geese love it. So you've actually set up a perfect place for the geese to come. If you eliminate them, more geese will take their place. That's, you're not gonna, you're not eliminating them. And I think in your proposal, you all had also said that you were only going to eliminate the geese that were permanent residents, not the ones that were migrating through. So what I've read from other parks that have actually eliminated their geese or hired someone to eliminate the geese, what happens is they don't discern whose, what, what population they're getting rid of. They just get rid of all of them. They sell the goslings for pet food. And they, and, but they can't sell the adults the meat. And that's why they do this, this poverty thing of giving it away. Because they actually can't sell the meat for anything else other than that, because it's illegal to do that. They make a lot of money off of it. It's very costly. You pay them per, per goose that they kill. They go into a, a gas chamber, basically, the truck. They take them into the truck. It's very traumatic. And people watching are traumatized by the trauma that they go through as well. Kill them, they put them in plastic bags and just toss them out until they're ready to get them away. Thanks.
Thank you for commenting tonight.
There's a individual who already commented, who's raised their hand again. Should I lower their hand or do they have a second individual?
No, one, one, two-minute set of comments is, is what we allow.
So at, at this point, I don't see anybody else raising their hand. So I just want to reiterate the instructions. If you want to comment, go to the participants window. At the bottom of the participants window is a button to raise your hand. If you're a phone-in caller, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine if you would like to make a comment. And that will bring you to our attention so that we know to unmute you. Also, if you, if your video is on and you're having any technical difficulties at all, either wave your hands wildly or email Tim Bartlett at T A Bartlett at UrbanaParks.org. And he'll let us know to unmute you. But that may be it, Michael.
Okay.
You have one question, Katie. I did receive an email from Lesia from WLL. She's asking, she wanted to listen to record. She needs your permission to access the Zoom. Says that she needs to.
I've admitted everyone to the Zoom that asked to come in. There's, another individual has raised their hand now. Michael, would you like me to unmute them?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I, I, we understand this is an awkward process for all of us to deal with this electronically.
I'm unmuting Leo and Lauren.
So basically, I have lived here for, just have lived here longer. And I do not think that slaughtering over half of the park's family is a solution. And I don't think we should just do that for the enjoyment of humans. Yeah, thanks. Bye.
Thank you for commenting tonight. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, hearing none, then it is time for us to move on to our next item of business, which is.
One more. I did want to let the board know that we did receive five emails that will be added to the public record. I understand we didn't want to read the emails in case they were lengthy and would exceed the two minutes. But we do have them. I've collected all five from the beginning and we'll see that they get into the recorded information.
All right, let us move on to new business item A, which is action on Illinois Department of Natural Resources Charity Harvest Permit Application.
Michael, we, and board, we have two guests with us tonight that'll be sharing a presentation, some information. Staff has some updates from the survey information. And we'll get on with that in a moment. I did want to remind to the board and anybody that may be listening at home. Obviously, the Park District's been involved in managing the geese for many years. When I started at the district in 1992, we did not have a goose problem or issue. In fact, it was, you know, a few geese at a time that would find the, find their way to the park. Over that almost 30 years, we've sort of transitioned into the park we see today. So in between that time, we've done a lot of education management. We've tried to educate the public. We've done all kinds of classes. We've tried to bring people together for learning lunches. We've talked to homeowner associations, visited many parks and natural areas to try to learn from other park districts on how they manage. I think we're at the point, I know the boards received all the information in our timeline. It shows all the different implements and techniques we've tried. But really at that point where we're at the permit application process, we've done everything as a district to meet that criteria. And that'll be shared tonight. But I did, my main point in speaking, I did want to remind folks that we are really looking to get a balance of geese in the park. There's never been an intent from staff or board or advisory committee or anybody that I'm aware of in Urbana to completely eradicate geese. Our goal is to try to get a sustainable number that we can actually manage. And we also think that the quality of life of the geese, that we also subject to hazing and dog, you know, chasing and some of the other techniques that, that are prescribed to help manage geese may really diminish the quality of life. So I guess I'm just trying to point out that our current management tool list is fairly short. We don't have a lot of really, I'd say, interesting or positive ways. We are moving through with many of the recommendations that we've heard through the public comment, like transitioning the lake edge, putting in a more naturalized tall grass native, planting around the edge. But still, we're at that point where we have a lot of geese and the impact is, is fairly evident. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff and our speakers and let them go ahead and present.
Thanks, Tim. I want to start by introducing Ben Williams. Ben is with us from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. And he's going to talk initially about some of the biology with the resident giant Canada goose. Ben, I'll put the screen up for you. And if you want, just let me know when you're ready for the slides to be advanced.
Sounds good. Thanks, Derek. And I'll just say thank you to, while Derek gets up our presentation, thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity or inviting me to speak about some of the issues that we've been talking about tonight from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources perspective. Little after me, my cohort with the USDA Wildlife Services, Scott Beckerman, will be, will be presenting kind of a follow-up to what I have to share. And so I'll let him introduce himself. But again, my name is Ben Williams. I am the Illinois Department of Natural Resources Urban Waterfowl Project Manager. I've been in the role going on a year now. I'm originally from Minnesota. I got my undergrad degree at the University of Minnesota and I got my master's degree studying waterfowl right there in Champaign at the University of Illinois. I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about kind of the, the biology of Canada geese, just briefly, and some of the, the ins and outs of goose management. And then I'm going to kind of talk about some of the protections that geese have and the permitting process. And then I'll turn it over to Scott, who can talk about more of the, the management techniques that we suggest and we recommend and that employ. I would just say that the Illinois Department of Natural Resources role in all of this is to advise the Urbana Park District and to assist them in the permitting process to make sure that they go through the necessary steps to acquire proper permits for whatever type of management they decide to employ. And to make sure that those, those management actions are held up to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources specific standards. So Derek, you can move forward with that and I'll get started. All right. First, I guess I'll just talk about Canada geese and specifically the giant Canada goose. It is a native species to Illinois. It is a relatively long-lived bird. They can live between, anywhere between 20, 10 to 24 years in the wild. Back in the early to mid 1900s, they were hunted to near extinction in the 1940s and 1950s. At that point, a population of giant Canada geese was found in Minnesota. And the conservation of the giant Canada goose began and they have done very well since then. It's been a wildlife success story. The population has recovered dramatically throughout the country, but especially here in the Midwest and in Illinois. And part of that has to do with their, their ability to adapt to our urban and suburban habitats. They, they utilize water, the grassy fields, agricultural fields, and kind of that, that matrix where all of those come together. They, they like grass lawns because they can easily digest grass. They, grass lawns provide them a wide view to look for predators. And essentially, like I mentioned, we've, we've created the perfect habitat for, for giant Canada geese throughout the state with our parks, our golf courses, our yards and all of the water features therein. And because of that, and because of their ability to adapt, they've started to become a nuisance. And I handle all of the nuisance Canada goose complaints throughout the state. And I can tell you that Champaign-Urbana is quickly on the rise in terms of goose, goose-human conflicts, second only to the Chicagoland area. And one of the problems with these giant Canada geese is that they congregate in large flocks. They are familial units. And so a single pair of geese can populate or repopulate an area within five years, up to 50 geese. The flock can, can grow exponentially. And often, especially with these giant Canada geese, they either never leave or return to breeding sites year after year. And so that is where they can quickly become overloaded in an area. Derek, you can go to the next slide. And so one of the distinctions that we do make in the waterfall world is that not all Canada geese are the same. Currently, there are 11 subspecies of Canada geese recognized that have occurred in Illinois. But the ones that we are mostly focused on in this discussion is the difference between the giants, which are our resident geese that are here year-round, and what we call, which are the birds that migrate through every year. They, at this time of year, interiors would be up in Canada, most likely along Hudson Bay, which is where they breed. And then in the fall, they would migrate down through Illinois and to their wintering grounds in either southern Illinois or further south. Some of them do stop in northern Illinois, in the Chicago-Champaign-Urbana areas. But then in the spring, the interiors would migrate back up to Canada where they breed, which is different than our residents that are here for the most part year-round. And this offers some different management challenges, especially in the springtime, where the resident Canada geese or the giant Canada geese, those terms are synonymous. They are hanging out around our parks, water basins throughout Champaign-Urbana. And generally, they only migrate if winter dictates. If it gets so cold that they can't stand it, then they migrate. But they've learned that, that it's a tool for them to, to stay safe if they stay in our urban areas. Again, that's different than our, our interiors, which migrate through at different times of the year. And what that means for, for managers is that there are different tools we use. If we have problems or issues with migrating flocks, we use different tools to solve those conflicts than with our resident geese. Derek, you can move forward. And so here are just some population estimates of giant Canada geese, both in Illinois and, and the Mississippi Flyway, which is comprised of many states up and down the Mississippi River and up into Canada. As you can see, the Illinois population fluctuates somewhat year to year. But in general, it's considered stable and potentially increasing. And in certain communities, it's definitely increasing, such as, like I said, the Chicago area, Springfield, or Champaign-Urbana area, Springfield. We're seeing increases in some of these urban centers. And likewise, generally, generally across the Mississippi Flyway, giant Canada geese are also increasing in population. And of course, what this means is higher populations, more likely to have conflict with humans. And again, that's because we're providing a, a great habitat for them with these water features and grass lawns and essentially removing all of their natural predators. You can move forward, Derek. And so what these slides are, hopefully it shows up here. There's a couple of maps that we had available that are the Champaign-Urbana and Savoy areas. And it doesn't look like they're showing up, so maybe the photos didn't transfer. But anyway, what it was highlighting is kind of these. But anyway, what it was highlighting is kind of these complexes that I mentioned where there are grassy areas and small water ponds and features that are right in proximity. And then surrounding Champaign-Urbana and Savoy, as everyone knows, is a lot of agricultural fields. And so there it is. And so this provides kind of those perfect hotspots for geese. And this is where we're seeing a lot of, a lot of conflict. So there's Savoy. You can move forward, Derek. All right. And lastly, to finish up my section here, I mentioned earlier that the IDNR is responsible for all of the permitting and involved with management techniques that require permitting. There is a federal protection for Canada geese in the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. And this is important because we don't want to have what happened in the 40s and 50s where we thought giant Canada geese were going extinct. We don't want that to repeat. And that, that protection protects all migratory birds and it's very important. As we are seeing more and more conflicts, the federal government has recognized that, that we, the states, need some tools to manage our resident populations that aren't migrating as much. And so the Illinois Department of Natural Resources has been issued a special permit from the US Fish and Wildlife Service, which allows us to, to permit management throughout the state. Additionally, our state law protects Canada geese and there are certain protections there. And so at two different levels, we protect geese and the goal is to, again, make sure we don't see those populations dip. At the same time, we recognize that there are conflicts and so we take on the authority to permit individuals or agencies. And the goal there is to allow them to do management techniques to lessen their conflicts. While at the same time, making sure that, you know, they, their management is up to our standards and that it doesn't go beyond what's ecologically sound. And I guess with that, I'm going to turn it back to Derek, who I think will introduce Scott then. And he can talk more about some of the management techniques. Derek?
Great. Thanks, Ben. Yes, the next will introduce Scott Beckerman, who's from the USDA Wildlife Services Group. Scott, are you muted and able to talk?
I am. Can you hear me?
Great, yeah.
Good. And thanks, Ben, and thanks, Derek. And I also would like to thank the board for inviting us to participate in tonight's meeting and provide some general information about giant Canada geese and conflicts and how to mitigate them. I do work for the US Department of Agriculture's Wildlife Services Program. I'm a wildlife biologist and I have a bachelor's of science and a master's of science as well. Wildlife management from the University of Missouri. And I've been the state director here in Illinois for our agency since 2007. And for those who aren't familiar, the Wildlife Services Program is directed by Congress to provide help to Americans to mitigate conflicts with wildlife. In Illinois, we work very closely with the DNR and Ben and his fellow employees. To try to help those across the state in trying to respond and lessen conflicts with wildlife. And specifically here for the Urbana Park District and Crystal Lake Park, our role is to help the park district board and employees assess what tools could be employed to successfully reduce the conflicts they've been having in the park. And so with that, we'll go ahead and continue on with the presentation. And first, really, we need to realize that there are literally tens of thousands of locations in Illinois where Canada geese inhabit water and nearby land and certainly not considered to be over abundant. They don't cause any conflicts. But we do have a few sites in the state that are intensively managed for human use and over a number of years. And sometimes it can take decades. The birds can become very abundant and they can cause a number of types of conflicts. And the reason that happens is, as Derek alluded to, because of the giant Canada goose populations behaviors. How they return to nest sites where they learned to fly, they eventually return to breed. At some of these sites, goose droppings can create a nuisance, for instance, in parks as we've heard a little about. And I think Derek will tell us more about later, the conflicts within Crystal Lake Park. Lawns, golf courses, a lot of times athletic fields, even boat docks. Other places where land is intensively managed at the water interface where people and geese interact. The droppings can contribute in some situations to nutrient loading with nitrogen and potassium levels in lakes increasing. And that can, in some cases, lead to algae and plant growth in the lake above levels that are desirable. An adult goose, on average, can deposit about a pound and a half of droppings a day. So it can add up if there are a lot of geese in a small area. One thing we do see when geese nest in areas close to where humans pass by frequently. We can have an aggressive behavior. They defend their nest from perceived threats like predators or pets or people. And people who aren't aware and come too close can be attacked. And there's a photo of one of those attacks occurring. That one is not stayed. It is rare, but it does happen. And we've worked with a number of sites where unsuspecting people were knocked down and injured by geese, but it is rare, thank goodness. Again, I think that Urbana Park District has employed a number of tools and techniques to try to mitigate their conflicts. And we'll go ahead and get into a few of the ones that are available. So the next slide. Okay. So what options do we have available, generally speaking, across the state of Illinois? And that we can draw from to assess to maybe employ here and in other urban areas with over abundant goose populations? And we've tested these, people have used them across the country. Some apply, some are not effective under certain management regimes. We look at the slope of where the water interfaces with the grass. If we have gentle angles where geese can easily transition to the land, it's more attractive to them. Where we have islands inside the lakes or the body of water, it becomes very attractive for them to nest. Because there are less predators that actually get to the island to destroy the nests. So we look now to work with designers, so when they're designing new basins, that they don't incorporate these features. Because we know in certain areas, they're going to lead to conflicts with geese. In areas where these features exist, it can be very expensive to redesign them. But it is an option to be evaluated. Other things that have been effective is installing natural buffer strips around the edge of the body of water. These native grass plantings can help discourage geese from transitioning from the land mode, from the water to the mode land. We've seen other entities install riprap. There's a photo here, large rock, which the geese generally don't like to walk over. They then have to fly as they transition. Just another option that helps reduce the area's attractiveness to the geese. On some bodies of water, we can actually exclude the birds by installing overhead parallel wires as a barrier about every 20 feet in the top right photo. Very effective at discouraging goose use of a water body. But it's not an option for every body of water. If there are certain uses like boating, kayaking in the winter, ice skating, fishing in the summer from boats or shore. Certainly that tool would not be an option, but it is very effective for some entities. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so we, beyond the long-term habitat management options to try to reduce these conflicts, we look at trying to educate our park users. The people who frequent these areas where the geese have become over abundant and are perceived to cause problem. Trying to get the people to understand that feeding geese artificially concentrates them in these small areas. And it attracts other geese to the sites and it just increases the problem. We also want those park users to know that feeding geese isn't healthy for them. It's not a natural food source. It can lead to, in some cases, nutrient deficiencies. And in some situations, it can result in a deformity in the wing shown here called angel wing syndrome. It's not common. But we certainly don't want to see that happening. We really try to encourage people not to feed geese, even though it, it seems initially to be something that would be helpful in a situation like this. Next slide, please. So then we start to look at active methods of trying to discourage goose use of this particular area, wherever it might be where they're determined to be over abundant. So we look at some very effective forms of dispersing the birds using canines. Other forms of dispersal, there are certain situations, special fireworks. In more rural situations, in the bottom right, these propane exploders, which have timed automatic explosions are very effective at dispersing the birds. And particularly those migrant geese that Ben mentioned. Very effective at moving those birds that aren't habituated to people in urban areas. Let's see. Swans. We have a picture of a swan. A lot of times people recommend trying to deploy swans on a body of water. And these are generally invasive mute swans. So that they will defend the area from geese. Unfortunately, swans aren't effective in that aspect in that they only defend a very small area around their nest. They are very aggressive to people, much more aggressive to people in protecting their nests than a Canada goose is. And quite frankly, because of the drawbacks of using swans as a means to try to reduce a goose problem, we, we recommend against it in every situation. Just try to avoid it if all possible. Next slide, please. Okay, we also look at ways to try to reduce goose foraging in an area. And there are a couple of repellents that are available that have been registered for this use. The first one I'd like to talk about is, excuse me, a methylanthrenolate-based product. That when sprayed on the grass, it smells like grapes. It's an extract from grapes. And it's designed to irritate the goose oral membranes when they forage on the grass. It is expensive to apply. It would be difficult to apply at the frequency it's required, which is, you know, every couple of weeks or maybe even more frequent. In our area in the summer with high humidities and intense ultraviolet light. And it breaks down very quickly. So that product is one that's available. Many people find that it really doesn't meet their needs at trying to redistribute goose use away from a site with conflicts. Another product, and there's a photo of it here, anthroconone-based product. We certainly don't endorse any particular product, but this one has been found to be fairly effective. Again, it is sprayed on grass. It causes intestinal irritation in the geese after they consume it. And, and the studies that we've conducted in the sites that we use it, it actually breaks down on the grass in about two to three weeks. It lasts a little bit longer, maybe 33% longer than the other product. But you have to remember, you're frequently mowing the grass every week. So you're mowing off the area that you're treating and trying to encourage geese to forage elsewhere. So it is an option. A lot of times it's utilized under very high-use areas, maybe just around a playground. These products are not known to cause hazards to humans when they're dry on the grass. People aren't eating the grass. So it's really not a problem for humans in any way. But they certainly are options that can be used in, in locations that are of high use. Okay, next slide, please. To try to keep it brief, there are a whole host of other tools that can be used to try to discourage goose use of a site. But many of them, when the population is already over abundant, aren't very effective. And so I, we can certainly discuss those later, but I wanted to move on to keep this presentation as brief as we can. To talk about the next level of mitigating these conflicts and that is trying to manage the population of birds. And one way to do that is through trying to prevent an increase in production each year by trying to prevent goslings from hatching. Through a special permit issued by Ben. The park district and other entities can apply corn oil to the eggs to stop diffusion of oxygen into the embryo. It basically stops development like putting chicken eggs in the fridge. It, it effectively reduces the production of young from those geese that year, that pair. And you really want to try to treat as many of the nests at a site as you can. So that we don't have a continual increase in the population. But you have to remember, those breeding birds are very long-lived. They can live 10, 15 to 20 years. So we would not expect through this method to see a decrease in the adult breeding goose population for a decade or more. If we were successful at oiling and treating every nest at the site. So it's, it's not something to reduce a population. It can just help stabilize the growth. And I should say that those permits that Ben issues for nest treatments are free. Okay, next slide, please. So as we look to manage the population, now in rural areas, hunting is an important part of managing the Canada goose population. There are an early season in September that is designed to focus harvest on these giant Canada bird, giant Canada geese that don't migrate. And we do know that there are hunters in the area outside the city limits that do help manage the numbers of birds. Within the Champaign-Urbana and Savoy area, but they just aren't successful enough at harvesting birds because they are very intelligent. At maintaining their population. The population appears to continue to be growing in this area at any rate. And then there's a regular goose season that runs through later in the fall and into the early winter. And there we see those hunters harvesting a mixture of the interior migrant birds as well as these resident giant birds. So hunting is an important part of managing the population. But in some of these metropolitan areas, we see that hunting isn't effectively stabilizing the population. They just can't get at the birds that are causing the conflict. So next slide, please. So one other tool that has been employed across the country in many states now. Is really the last step in trying to manage an over abundant goose population. When the other methods just haven't helped achieve a reduction in numbers. Is a charity harvest type program where we're looking at capturing the geese when they molt their flight feathers in the late spring, early summer. Those birds are mainly transported to a Illinois Department of Agriculture-approved poultry processing facility. Where they're euthanized and processed for human consumption, just like you would process domestic chickens and turkeys that we buy in the grocery stores. Identical process, same regulations governing those, the management of those birds at those facilities. The difference is, is Canada geese, because of their federal protections, they are not sold. The products cannot be sold at all. They have to be used in another way. And we do have this program that is a four-agency program, the charitable, charity harvest. It's administered by the DNR, our agency, USDA Wildlife Services, the Illinois Department of Ag and the Illinois Department of Health. It developed very strict guidelines on how to go about it. It targets these giant resident geese that are on the site. It will not impact the migrant population of birds at all because those birds aren't here in the late spring, early summer when we exercise the action. And it really, it allows a fresh start at the site by reducing the population to a more manageable level. Resets that clock on the number of birds that we have. And really will allow the multitude of other non-lethal techniques to become effective again in helping mitigate the problems. And try to prevent, you know, an influx of birds back into the area. I will say, you know, experience across the US from the people who exercise these in the communities at which these charity harvests are implemented. Will tell you, have seen that they are effective and that does last for a number of years as long as the community, the entity continues to implement their other measures of mitigating goose conflicts. This method does require a special permit from the DNR. And in Illinois's case, when the permit's issued, if it would be issued to Urbana Park District, then they would be required to work with our agency where we would administer the charity harvest. And they would have to reimburse the US Department of Agriculture for the cost involved for our employees to assist during the charity harvest. Remember, the goal is to really try to achieve a balance with the goose numbers at the site wherever this overabundance is. And with that, I'd just like to say there really isn't any easy fix to managing an over abundant goose population. Next slide, please. We really have to use a multifaceted approach to management. And every site is a little bit different in their human uses and what they have determined to be what we call their cultural carrying capacity for goose numbers. So with that, Derek, I'll turn it back over to you and
Great.
Continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Just want to quickly say for the, the board's benefit, but, but also for the folks that are, you know, watching from home, that we've tried pretty much all these methods, with the exception of the swan due to concerns about them being aggressive. methods, with the exception of the swan due to concerns about them being aggressive, the total exclusion of fencing, due to, you know, limited, we didn't want to limit access for fishing and boating. The restoration of the lake I just Tim mentioned is a project that's underway. We did a portion of it last fall, and so it's growing now. The balance pending approval by the board later this evening will be seeded and planted this fall and next spring. And it takes about two to three years for that to establish a point. It's a robust planting that provides those benefits. In terms of the, the impacts we've seen, all, all the scenes that you saw here tonight, and certainly the geese feces is a, is a major problem that we've been challenged with on our paths, on our boat docks, on the terrace of the lake house. The comments that we received through our survey indicated that people are having challenges with elsewhere in the park and kids referenced kids picking up feces and dogs eating feces and just a lot of concerns with that. But then another really big driver for us is the water quality impacts. And while it's not the geese alone, we know that we have a large urban watershed that feeds that lake. They're certainly contributing factor. And we've had progressive number of algae challenges at the, at the lake, duckweed and watermeal for, for years. But in recent history, blue green algae blooms, which are a concern, potentially toxic. We've tested ours and they remain at a lower toxicity rate where it's not been a public health concern. But our understanding from our, from the folks at I E P A is that once you start seeing those, they tend to increase unless you get on top of your nutrient issues. And so this is part of that, that approach. Close this presentation out and see if the board has any questions for Ben or Scott or for staff. Nancy, I think you're muted.
Every, is it every adult? Is it adults and goslings? How, what's the determination on which?
Well, I'll start to answer that and then I'll maybe Scott or Ben could, could, could help as well. But my understanding is that we, you know, this harvest will take place later in June, early July. So at that, at that point, the goslings will be, you know, indistinguishable from the adults. And the geese are inherently, you know, mobile. They're going to move around quite a bit. And so we won't capture them all, even with the best attempts. And so some geese will remain. And we want some geese to remain. We, we know people like the geese. They enjoy the geese. And then our goal is to manage them at that sustainable level, using the same tools we have been. Scott, did you want anything to that or Ben?
That, that is a good question. So once the, if the board decides to move forward, you would have to establish what you feel is an acceptable balanced population in your park. And so that when we work with you, we would leave that range of numbers there. In some cases, the birds, the young birds are distinguishable from the adults, but we'll work with, with the park district staff when we're there to make sure that, you know, you can maintain that population that you like have as a goal within the park.
And, and I would only just add that as part of the requirements for the permit itself, there is an expectation of ongoing goose management in, at, at the park to whatever level the park district deems is acceptable for the number of geese there. So it's, I know some people have concerns about, you know, do, does this have to happen every year? And the goal would be that it wouldn't have to happen every year, which is why we require continued goose management with all of those lethal technique, or non-lethal techniques, excuse me, that Scott mentioned. And that's part of the requirements of the permit.
Derek, I have another question. Do you have of the amount of money, just ballpark-ish, that we spend a year now on trying to eradicate, you know, control, I would say, control the goose population?
Yeah, I do. It's part of our, the, the permanent application we need to submit. And last year, on the dog hazing, we spent over eleven thousand dollars. We estimate an additional fifteen hundred dollars a year just in staff time. And then there's the material cost. I looked at material costs since we started our goose management program eight years ago, and it was just over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Per year or the total that we've spent?
Total, yeah.
Okay.
Derek, if I recall, and my memory may be hazy here, but there was concern that the geese might have an impact on the very things that we are planning to try to deter the geese. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah. And Roger, you know, we already have provisions in place to try to protect against that. And when you restore a lake edge and plant it with native grasses and wildflowers, you typically install a goose grid, which is, you know, exclusionary fencing along the periphery. And, you know, that'll, that'll certainly help. But the geese will do what geese do and they'll, they'll find a way. And we've talked with our design engineer about which plants are going to be more susceptible and have plans to come in and, and spray those same chemicals Scott talked about every two weeks to try to protect the plants. So we'll, we'll do what we can. But, but there's also the concern that the geese will, will, will be here to, to graze and impact that new planting.
Have we made any determination on what essentially sustainable population for the park? And I think that's one thing that we should stress because I've read all of the comments. And I think that a lot of folks assume that we are trying to get rid of all of the geese, which is not the case. But have we determined what's our sort of baseline? How, how have we gone about doing that?
Yeah. When, so maybe six years ago, when, when staff got trained on our egg and nest management protocol and worked with a group called Wild Goose Chase that does services up north, they developed a full management plan for us that included a lot of things we're using, all the things we're using today. And we asked them about that, that question. And their opinion was that a twenty-five to fifty, seventy-five to fifty percent reduction would have a notable reduction of impacts in the park. And more recently, talking with Scott and Ben, knowing that there will be tendency for, for birds to return to the site, the target would be ten to twenty birds post harvest, and then trying to manage to stay below that fifty percent threshold. Right now, we have, we estimate we have eighty to a hundred birds.
I know that Scott and Ben both mentioned something about it will control the population for, for a moment, but then there's a possibility of over several years that they can migrate back to this area. We don't know how many. So with this method, I mean, are we prepared to handle that in the, in the years to come and knowing that they could migrate back to this area?
Yeah, LaShonda, I, what we will do is continue to do everything we're doing currently. So using the dog hazing, the sprays, we do, we use a laser hazer as well, which that's something that, that staff can use and that it kind of mimics the, the glint of a coyote's eye if used at dusk and dawn. So we use all these tools to try to discourage the, the quick return of geese. And then, of course, the restoration of the lake edge will help as well. And talking with, with Scott and Ben, most other landowners who do this, it's, it's seven to 10 years before they begin to see geese returning at a level where they're having a significant impact. And agencies might think about doing it again. I understand that one of the homeowner associations in town performed a charity harvest six years ago, and they're considering one for the coming year. But I think with all that we're doing and the, the lake rehab, I'm hopeful we can beat that. I just want to relate to, to the board and people watching from home that we, we never wanted to be here. We were, when I first heard about this, you know, six years ago, and we're starting our egg and nest management, we, we, we really wanted to use every tool available to us to, so that we wouldn't come to the point where we're considering this. But even as we, with all we've been doing, last year as we were doing our strategic plan and talking about the improvements in Crystal Lake, attention kept coming around to the geese in the park and the problems with the geese in the park. And so we felt that we needed to bring it to you all, the board, to, to discuss and, and then ultimately to the public as well. And it's been difficult during this time of COVID to facilitate that dialogue. And it's, it's been interesting, the comments we've received. It's, we knew there would be some mixed feelings about it. And that's evident today.
I've, I've heard some comments, several comments tonight, of critical of the, the way that the public was engaged in this, in this process. Did we do this differently than we have done other, other major decisions, other major projects like this? Was this, was it fast tracked? Was it, well, just basically, was it done differently? Or, or is it just the nature of the, of the, of the topic itself that, 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 that has raised some of those questions?
And we, I don't think we did anything differently, Roger. You know, we, we did a full press release and we're actually really pleased with the response we got from the media that picked it up. You, you always wish, you know, that you'd have more saturation. And we also put the, the signs out in the park, alerting folks to the information on the website about it. As I mentioned, you know, for last year, we've been working on strategic plan and have had a lot of feedback with folks about Canada goose management. We've throughout been using our advisory committees, both our natural areas advisory committee and our, and our UPDA, our citizen advisory committee to talk about it. So I think we've, we've, we, we never shy away from public input. In fact, we, we lean into it. And so although this was required for the permit, we, we would have wanted to do this anyway. And I'm, 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 I'm pleased that we had such a strong response on the survey. It's, it's challenging to do it. You know, you know, right now, when you can't have a public meeting, that's what we would usually do is, is have invited everybody to, to the lake house and gather around and talk with people and have those discussions. We haven't been able to do that, which is regrettable, but we've done what we can.
And, and Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, through the planning process, redoing the master plan and so on, I mean, this, this didn't just start a month ago. It's been many, many months, in fact, more than a year that we've been engaging the public. And the concerns about the geese have been pretty high on the list of, of concerns that our residents have had about conditions in the park. Fair to say?
Yeah, yeah. We've been working on the, the lake rehab plan. I think it's been close to four years, about three years for, for certain. And, and, you know, geese have been a topic of conversation on that plan. We've had numerous public meetings for that as well as the, the path work and now the engineering work. So there's been a lot of dialogue there. It's, it's always regrettable that, you know, you, you, when you get to this point and you, you find people haven't heard about it. And so that's why we, you know, reopen the survey. And I do want to continue to have that dialogue. And this is, this is far from over. And we always want to have a lot of public involvement in our management efforts.
One of the things that struck me from the work that Cara Doudak did on, on analyzing people's responses to those two surveys, how valid the surveys were or whatever, was that there was no middle ground. That, that, that there were either, there were three hundred and some odd people who felt absolutely strongly ninety to a hundred percent in favor, and then two hundred and some odd that were, that, that were zero to ten percent in favor, and almost nothing in between, which is concerning to me. But, you know, what, what do you do? So.
Michael, one other comment I wanted to add too is, over the last four years, we've been working very closely with UPDA. We've tried to present, you know, tours to the park, talk to them about the master plan implementation, the projects that are coming up. And we, you know, seen a steady growth support, I guess, for reducing the number of geese. I mean, there's always some people that are concerned about it. But I would say by and large, over the last four years, we've had kind of a push from the advisory committee to let's get Crystal Lake Park back in balance. Let's do what we can do to make sure that people will come back to the park if we do all the things that we've, you know, been doing for the last decade. So that's another shift I've noticed within our own organizations. Maybe twenty, thirty years ago, we might not have had that, well, we didn't have that problem. But I'm not sure we'd have had that, you know, sentiment. And it's really intensified over the last few years. And again, is maybe what Roger's suggesting, there aren't a lot of middle grounds, you know, to kind of land on that makes everybody relatively happy. I think the approach of creating this balance is probably the best thing that we could do, so that you could still come to the park, see nature at its best, but not be impacted to the level that you won't come back.
And I think when we started the, the nest, the nest management program, we had, we had several meetings with the public. And I was actually quite surprised that there were so few people who were objecting to that. So it's interesting to me that it's the removal of the live geese that's the problem, that people don't mind so much the nest management. And I realized that nest management isn't enough, and we are going to have to continue doing it. But one of the things I read in some of the comments was that the, the geese are sort of a charismatic species, if you will. And I think that that's part of the problem, that people are enchanted by the goose itself and don't see them in the aggregate and the problem that they cause in their over, in their overabundance. Because people weren't unhappy about oiling the eggs, which would prevent another goose from arriving into the park. So it's, I mean, that's, that's quite fascinating to me how people have divergent opinions about whether it's an egg or a goose. Yet they're all the same.
Are there any more questions for these gentlemen? Well, hearing none. This is on our agenda as an action item. I'm wondering if there is anybody who's willing to go ahead to make a motion to approve that we apply for a permit to do the charity harvest.
Do we have to call it a charity harvest? Because I agree, it's a rather approach.
I don't think we have to call it a charity harvest. I don't know what the official name of the permit is.
Yeah. The geese are dead either way. But I do understand that, I, I mean, I, I would appreciate a straightforward approach. And, you know, we don't have to call it slaughter of the innocents. But I think that maybe charity harvest is a little more sugar coated than I think it needs to be. So, I mean, it's just a question. It's not my opposition to it. I'm just wondering if we, if we can.
I understand the concern is this, but this is the official title from USDA and IDNR. And so if that is the case, then in terms of the motion, I think it would behooves to be consistent. So there's no confusion. I just, I just don't have the, is that I, I'm seeing some nods. Yes, that this is the official title of the, of the program. Like, this is not our language. This is the state and the USDA's language.
Yes, from, from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, that is the official title of the permit.
Yeah, the, the four agencies agreed in a formal memorandum of understanding to implement the program and the title is a charity harvest program.
Okay, well, I move to approve the IDNR charity harvest permit application.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion from the board on this? Hearing none. I would, it, it says here that voice vote is sufficient, but I would prefer that we do this openly and do a roll call. I would, it, it says here the voice vote is sufficient, but I would prefer that we do this openly, uh, and do a roll call. Starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 Aye. I believe that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. Next item of business is the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee report. Is there anything beyond the, uh, written report?
We had a great meeting.
I'm having some difficulty, my internet.
You, you appear to be muted, Nancy, I said.
Oh, sorry, I'm having some internet difficulties. Are we, um, talking about UPDEC?
We are.
Okay.
Do we have an update about the plots out there at Meadowbrook?
Can you repeat that, LaShonda?
Do we have an update about the plots at Meadowbrook Park?
Yes, we shared with UPDEC our, uh, garden action plan that was outcomes of the focus group work that we did. I think we did a thorough analysis and I think the program is up and running. We've committed, uh, communicated back with all the, folks that had reached out to us and, uh, still working on several of the issues, the mug work, things like that. I think UPDEC thought it was a really terrific approach and thought that we had really covered all the aspects that, you know, citizens had brought to us. I think there'll still be ongoing efforts, you know, other site improvements, what's to do with excess lots, drainage, things like that, that we're still working on. But addressing probably the most primary issue of soil fertility, making sure that we connected with the staff people that are assigned to work there and begin working on the invasive mug work.
Was there anything else with regards to UPDEC? I, I didn't quite make the connection on that one, but.
Yeah, I did not make the, I did not make that meeting either. Um, I was questioning, it's under, um, projects update. It says capital projects are continuing. Crystal Lake Park bid was postponed. Correct at the time, because I know that it's not the case now. So I wondered if that was a mistake in the minutes or if it was just correct at the moment of the meeting.
Nancy, was the, the bid opening that was postponed? The bids were initially scheduled to be due. Can you hear me okay? The, the bids were initially scheduled to be due, uh, right when, uh, COVID closures were taking place and we were concerned about bidder participation. So we pushed the bid date, the opening date back and as a result had better participation into bids.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that it was right in the minute.
We originally thought we might actually be approving that bid at the April meeting, right? And then we basically pushed it back a month?
Correct.
So that's what that meant.
Any other questions or comments relative to the UPDEC report? Okay, sounds like we're ready to move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda for this evening, our approval of the minutes of the April 7th, 2020 board study session. Approval of minutes from the April 14th, 2020 regular board meeting. Uh, the receipt of the monthly reports from the three departments. Uh, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. Action to accept the philanthropy reporting gifts listed with gratitude. Action on resolution 2020 dash 03 to appoint the UPD Freedom of Information Act officers. Action on resolution 2020 dash 04 to appoint the UPD Open Meetings Act representatives. Action on resolution 2020 dash 05 to appoint the UPD ADA coordinator. And finally, action on annual appointments and assignments. These are all items that are, it's thought to be of, of non-contradictory and it is the purview of, let the public know, it is the purview of any single commissioner to move any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate action. Is there any commissioner wishing to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed in an anonymous manner?
Still moved.
Second.
That's been moved in second and under the rules of the consent agenda, there's to be no further discussion, uh, on these items at this point. So we can begin a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Aye.
LaShonda?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I think everybody responded here. So that has carried unanimously and moves us on to our financial reports.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Can you hear me now? You can hear me now, right? Somebody say yes?
I can, yep.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. I thought I'd just share the financial reports on the screen for any viewers at home after this has been recorded. So, in, at the April board meeting, one of the resolution, or one of the ordinances that the commissioners approved was a supplemental appropriation ordinance. Um, and that made some big changes to our amended budget for the year. Namely that our bond sales recognized the refinancing that we did on the series 2010 and series 2011 bonds. So this page one that we look at every month of the, um, revenue and expenditure report is just our operating budget. It does not include our capital improvements fund. We normally wouldn't see bond sales in this part of the budget. And as you could see, we had zero here last fiscal year because it's not, not a normal place that we would see bond sales. But this is the portion of our bond sale that we did in, excuse me, in December that went towards the refinancing. So that was actually recognized in our bond fund. Um, and then the cost of issuance related to this principle was also recognized in our bond fund as well. So those are the changes that were made with that supplemental appropriation ordinance. And after the board approved that ordinance, I changed, I amended the budget with those figures. So I just wanted to point out that, um, that's really the major change to this. But now we're looking at a full 12 months of the fiscal year. So you can see kind of where things are settling out. Almost everything's finalized in this. So I don't expect it to change very much, but you'll see every page does note that it's still preliminary at this point. You could see, you know, we didn't get quite the amount of property taxes that we were expecting in our operating funds. Uh, this is primarily due to the exemption that was approved after property tax bills were sent out for OSF hospital. So, um, that's what this $200,000 or so is in addition to any other loss of collection from other smaller taxpayers. But that was the big one. Uh, normally we have closer like a 99.5% collection rate. So this is a little lower than usual. However, it was made up for in several areas, including interest. For the most part, for the year, interest rates were way better than anticipated. It was really only in like February and March where we really saw them really start to tank. And of course, they're still tanked now, but, but at least for this fiscal year, we benefited from high interest rates, a lot higher than our expectations. Going down the line though, you can see, um, if you look at the bottom line for total revenues, we're at 97% for total revenues at 22,00682. Following that are the listing of our expenditures. And for the most part, they're all pretty much in line with expectations. You can see our total expenditures are at 94% of expectations. So, um, down at the very bottom line, while we had initially expected to have a deficit of fund balance of six, or, you know, a, a decrease in our fund balances of around $609,000. We actually, right now, are at an increase in our fund balance of 157,000 for our operating funds. Now, we still have some spending to do related to FY20. So, um, utility bills and things that are billed after the fact in May and sometimes even into June will continue to hit this budget. But again, it's not, you know, a huge, huge amount. So I think in the end, our, our overall operating budget will perform better than our expectations for FY20. In the capital improvements fund, again, we saw some big moves in what this budget looked like the last time I presented it to you. Uh, primarily instead of this figure saying $835,000, it now says, you know, 6,0648, which includes, um, the geo bond that we issued and the, um, ARS alternative revenue source bond that we issued as well. So I made all of those changes after the board approved the supplemental appropriation ordinance, um, in April. So those, those changes have been made and we wind up with, because we didn't wind up spending the funds that we got for the reissued bonds yet. Uh, we have an increase in our fund balance of almost $7 million for the capital approved, capital improvements fund at the end of April. District wide, um, I like to highlight this number at the very bottom, that our ending fund balance for the district as a whole at the end of April right now is at 14 million. We will continue to spend a little bit of that as we go through some of those payables at the end of the year. I did want to touch, yes, LaShonda, uh huh.
Just a small typo. I don't know if it matters where it says transfers in. It seems pretty consistent on every page or it's missing the S in there. I don't know if that really matters or not.
Yeah, it's probably been like that since I set it up. I'll change that. Thank you. Thank you. I did want to touch just briefly on our main operating funds because it's, you know, when we look at the big picture, everything looks pretty good. Uh, but I did just want to highlight our main operating funds and kind of where they're ending up for the fiscal year. So we had originally projected the general fund to decrease its fund balances by 372,000. Most of this was a one-time transfer that the board authorized, um, of $300,000 to help with some capital projects. So we were expecting to spend this down and, and part of that's because we're towards our maximum fund balance target. So it's a, a way that we're able to support some of those capital projects with our general fund. Uh, I'm in the end though, we only right now have a deficit, a, a decrease of $10,000. So we performed quite well in the general fund compared to expectations. Uh, I can't say the same about the rec fund, unfortunately. Um, I, while we really were not anticipating any decrease in the fund balance of the rec fund, we wound up with a decrease in the rec fund of around $122,000. Which is a pretty big hit because this fund doesn't have that much fund balance in it compared to the general fund. There's a few reasons for this. Uh, three reasons I think are the biggest, uh, I just like to highlight. And I started some discussions with Corky about some of these, but you know, as part of the COVID-19 situation during the beginning, in March and April alone, we issued about $50,000 of refunds. So that really hit fees hard. Up here in the fees line, you know, we're only at 71% of, for fees. So this is what was hit most hard. But if you really look at the numbers here, $50,000 doesn't really make up this gap. So, um, another area that really lacked, uh, was the swim, the competitive swim team. It got a really late start compared to what we originally estimated. Um, you know, we, a lot of our budgets were based around the program really kicking, uh, getting kickstarted in May and it really didn't get started until August or September after they got their official USA swimming designation. So, um, that really didn't meet its budgeted expectation for fees either. And then lastly, um, in, uh, the, I, I think it gets recognized in this donations line. We didn't receive a $30,000 contribution from the Urbana School District in FY20 for the splash program that we, that we billed in March. And I think that they just had some delays in their office with everything going on and people working from home. It's on its way. It's supposed to get paid this week, but so basically we're going to double up on that donation in FY21, but it won't be recognized in our FY20 budget. So it hit our bottom line pretty hard. Um, but I hope that in FY21, um, we can cover some ground in a couple of those areas, uh, depending on, you know, how we get programs running again and what other kind of, um, adjustments we wind up making to this budget. So I just did want to draw the board's attention to that because it is not quite the level that we had hoped for the year, for the ending fund balance for the rec fund. Museum Fund, of course, always performs very strongly. Um, while they also had a transfer out to the capital improvements fund to pay for some capital improvements. They, as budgeted, they wound up actually adding to their fund balance again. Uh, this is primarily because the nature center does a fantastic job managing their expenditures. So even when they don't collect quite as much revenue as they expect, they make up for it in adherence to their budgets for expenditures. So they perform very well year after year. Uh, the UIC's budget is still in the works. Uh, this budget hasn't been quite finalized. I go in, um, at the end of the fiscal year and I plug in the estimated shares that each, the school district and the park district share. But in the end, this budget will not have, it'll have a zero net change. So right now it's a positive 49, but we still have utilities to pay. And then what'll happen is the, uh, partner shares will get adjusted so that this winds up being zero. But right now, this is just with our estimated partner shares plugged in. So I don't have a final, quite final budget on that one. So I don't normally go into that level of detail, but I just thought it's, you know, kind of the end of the, um, fiscal year, it's really a good chance that we can kind of get a full picture of what a whole year looks like. Moving into future years, we're going to have some more history now in our new, um, accounting system. And so it'll be really interesting, we can actually be able to watch month to month of how we performed the prior year for that same month. So, um, that could be some interesting information I could bring to future board meetings. Nope, wrong one. Next, I'll touch on the treasures report. This report shows all of the park district's funds and where the funds are invested. The park district had total funds on hand on April 30th, 2020 of $15,618,936.27. At the end of the fiscal year, we report our, uh, investments at market value rather than at cost. So the English fund is the main fund that is affected by that. And you'll see the notes at the bottom. They say they're listed at market value. The top of the second page lists the funds that we have in interest-bearing accounts. I've seen some major decreases to our interest rates, unfortunately, over the last two months. For reinvestments of CDs, but also just our money market accounts. Um, they were close to 2% there for a little while, like in, um, Illinois funds and, park pool, and they've just really gone down and down and down every month, um, over the last several, since probably February. But this last month was like a big hit. So I'm, and we all know that's happening in the economy right now. So that's not a surprise. But of that 15 million, $618,000 that we have on hand, 13,995 is out in investments. Interest-bearing investments. There were no changes to inter-fund loans during April. They're, they're all still stable. And finally, um, in the month of April, we had total disbursements of funds of $526,000. I actually expected that number to be quite a bit lower since all of our facilities are closed. And we're not operating any programs, but normally April would be a month that would be a lot higher because we're kicking up and getting ready for summer. So it wound up being kind of that baseline 500,000 number that I've hinted at before. And that really is just to cover our basic payroll and, you know, keeping our doors open and the lights on. So, um, that's, I guess, just normal for, for us this time of year. And with that, um, I'll allow you guys to discuss or approve the treasures report.
I am, we accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? I believe that carries unanimously.
Lastly, I'll just touch briefly on the areas in the capital budget, budgets that had activity this period. Again, I made some changes. We originally were budgeting for all of our cost of issuance to be paid from the capital improvements fund, but after the supplemental appropriation ordinance, those costs got divided between the bond fund and the capital improvements fund based on, just allocated between them based on who had, uh, the proceeds. allocated between them based on who had the proceeds. So only eighty-nine, nine hundred of the cost of issuance had to be recognized in the capital improvements fund, and the remaining amount was recognized by the bond fund. So this number will go down. But overall, it was just an in and out. So there was no change in how much proceeds were available for projects. It was just the amount of the proceeds that was issued to pay for the cost. So there isn't really that much change other than to the totals here. We did make a payment to Farnsworth Group for health and wellness facility design in this budget, and the cost of issuances were adjusted. That's the activity in this budget. In the twenty twenty budget, we received donations for tributes, and we purchased a new custodial van. In the twenty nineteen budget, again, we received some funds for tributes. And we made a payment on the Lille Park improvements that we're working on the parking lot project. And we also purchased the Mople Park Urbana Transit van. We finalized the transfer to cover the purchase of the gross block property. And that actually happened in the prior fiscal year, but there was a seven hundred fifty dollar carryover that came into the, that up of an expense we paid in May last year. So and then there was some spending on the museum grant design work. We received the one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred dollar contribution from Carl for their, the partner match for the local match for the ITAP Park Street Path for, that they committed to. So that was really exciting. And we pretty much have closed out that project at this point. And again, there was another partial payment towards the MIC museum grant design and some improvements at Crystal Lake Park. There was no activity in the twenty sixteen budget. And with that, I believe Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Yeah, I have a few brief updates that provide tonight. The first one is regarding that ITAP project. This morning, we held a site walkthrough with our engineer, and we'll have another walkthrough with the contractor and our engineer tomorrow morning. Can you hear me okay?
It's a little broken up. Yeah. I can help fill in, folks.
Could Andy try turning off his video and doing just audio? Would that work?
I'll give it a try.
Much better so far.
Yeah, that is way better.
Oh, yeah.
It's my face that's doing it.
We didn't see that.
So in that walkthrough, we reviewed an establishment of turf areas, the trees, landscape beds at both ends of the path. There's still some work to be done with those plug plantings. One of the trees is not doing well, and there's some turf that needs addressed. That's primarily around the corner of Park and Broadway. We'll hope to have the landscaping contractor back on site in the next week or two. But like I said, we'll be meeting with them tomorrow morning, start discussing those details. With the saline habitat enhancement, we've been working with IDNR to develop draft language for the amendment to the IGA to provide for a transfer of funds from US Fish and Wildlife for additional stream structures and invasive removal along that saline project area. Our goal is to have this amendment to the board for review and approval at the next board meeting. Obviously, with the state uncertainties with COVID nineteen mandates and working in the offices at the state, you know, this may get pushed back, but we're trying to move it forward as fast as we can. The contractor on the site is currently reviewing the updated items, and will provide pricing for an upcoming change order. And we will not authorize that until we have the transfer from the state.
Hey, Andy, we're starting to lose you again.
An approved amendment to that IGA. The contractor is simplified, and they'll be on the site some later on from the project that was. Okay, I'm out of options.
Nope, you're back.
Getting better?
Yep.
Okay. I'll, I'll see if I can touch base on Lille real quick and jump in if it's getting too choppy, I guess. We had some additional clarifications to make to the design for the city and are awaiting some information from the state on an extended bump out that's currently at three feet, but we're looking to extend it to five feet into that area of avoidance. That's for a vehicle turnaround point. And we're looking for some clarification on a preservation covenant that needs to be executed prior to work recommencing. And that covenant ensures that the district will not do any further excavation or construction activities without doing an evaluation from an archaeologist. So hopefully, we'll get that information soon and be able to start turning around the change order for the project with the contractor. Is it getting better?
Much.
Regarding the having to involve the anthropologist, archaeologist, excuse me, in the park, is that just going to cover the area already identified? Or have you determined finally, one way or another, whether it was ultimately going to apply to the entirety of the park?
Yeah, that's one of the things that we're waiting to hear back on for certainty, whether it's involving just that project area for our current parking project, or if it's a covenant that applies to the entirety of Lille. I think based on the experience with this project, we'd probably move forward with doing an archaeological review if we were planning on doing any major site work in the future anyway at Lille at this point.
And we'd like to get some clarification if there's smaller things like planting a tree that would be permissible to happen without a full-on investigation, landscape bed, some of the smaller disturbance type items. So once we know what the covenant parameters are, we'll get clarification if it extends to rest of the park. I think that covers capital updates unless you had anything else, Andy?
No questions.
Okay, I think that brings us to the executive director's report, Dan.
Thank you, Michael. Well, as a maybe a picking up where we left off in our brief discussion at the study session, primarily around the COVID issue, staff's been working together in our leadership team with our management staff. Derek and I did some meetings with all of the planning and operations staff, had small group discussions over Zoom last week. And I think we've all come to the conclusion we really need to take a little bit longer term on our plans for how do we get back opening the park district. One of the other things we did, meet and talk with via Zoom, with the Champagne Park District staff, we really wanted to find out what are their thoughts? How are they approaching summer as relates to activities and facilities? I think our conclusion of that discussion was that we really need to push things out to, like, we're recommending July third, where we could give the community enough heads-up information, which would include not opening Crystal Lake Pool, not having the indoor aquatic center open, canceling our summer events, which would include programs such as all of our camp programs and special camps, events like the art fair, which is August first, is probably not likely to happen. But the idea is that we really need to kind of retool the park district. We need to figure out, how do we, when we talk about reopening the district, what does that mean? Well, to staff, it means, can we guarantee that workers can report to work? Do we have structured strategy to spread working shifts out, keep people further apart, rebrand what buildings people report to if we have more at one site or another? Sanitation, PPE, all of that was sort of in the works and discussed. We know some of our workstations in some of our buildings are virtually impossible to keep a six-foot distance. So that's where maybe putting somebody at a different building or agreeing to work on different time schedules might be a way forward. So this would give us a chance to let families know before we start collecting any fees for camps, and let them know that we can't be their, you know, summer resource. As much we really hate to make these announcements, we don't think that every two weeks with the little update is really helpful to the public at this point. Again, we're looking at a much longer term approach to this. You know, with all, you know, things falling into place, we'd love to consider having an exciting, you know, but we're probably looking at a different approach to our brochure that'll be coming up and what we can offer. So we kind of started focusing on the can-do district idea of what can we do? What type of activities can we point people to help facilitate, set up in a virtual mode, or draw them or attract them to? We even started discussing things such as esports. We know Champagne Park District's engaging in that. I think there was an interest already, but certainly the time we're in now, we facilitate some interest in activities like that. We can't predict really where we'll be, you know, August first, either as a park district, as a state, or as a country. But we do feel that we could use that time very productively to get those plans and actions in place. So when we do gradually come back to providing services and everybody returning to work in a more normal fashion, that we can do it in a safe, appropriate way. Comments we've received, I've gotten a few calls or emails from the public regarding, you know, please don't have camps. As much as I appreciate your camps, I just don't feel safe standing my kids there. So we were sort of pretty much paralleling those same ideas. The last thing we would want to do is bring workers or public back to us and have a, that doesn't necessarily guarantee that couldn't happen. But if, at least if we have the time and the effort to put as many things in place that we could, that'll help ensure that people better, you know, weather through that. So that's probably the big, big news and might be a big disappointment to many, sure it will be. Our hope is that by May fifteenth, the end of this week, we could have a message that goes out to let the public know of these these changes. Again, the feedback I've got is people really need a little more solid date for planning, stringing things out over a couple of weeks, which is hopeful, and it kind of makes people cling to that. Might not help them in a longer pursuit. We don't know what will happen in the fall with school or university. I'm sure they're just as much up in the air and making plans, you know, as they can. I guess the upside is we work very closely with Champagne Park District. We communicate often with the Forest Preserve District, communicating with Urbana Schools, City of Urbana, as well. I think they all understand and are probably in the same, you know, situation, trying to look a little bit further out. Any questions? I did want to pause. There might be some comments or questions about that. So I'll just pause for a moment on that.
In picking the July thirty-one kind of date, have you gotten any guidance from the state and where they think they're headed with this? Or is that just your, your best guess at this point is that the earliest it would be feasible to ramp things back up again?
Very good question, Michael. I think internally with our leadership team and in Champagne Park District, we looked at the state guidelines. You know, while we may be at phase two, it seems that our cases are going up locally. And so, you know, are we in phase two, three? We're not really sure. But we thought it was obviously clear that we could, you know, zoom that next level, that we probably should take some precautions. I should have said also, you know, if things rapidly improve, we could certainly alter our plans. It's never as smooth, you know, to do it that way. But we're pretty sure the public would see that as more good news than concerning news. So that's kind of our thought on that. We wish we had much more clear information and guidelines, but we're just really trying to work with, you know, our local public health department, any information we get from the state, and the usual channels, people at the university, other folks, you know, working and looking at this issue.
The only thing I had to add to that, Tim, is our staffing levels, too, and being able to ramp up those forces again. A lot of people that, for example, that work at camps, that were hired to work camps, they were sent home from the university. And so you lose a lot of people that way. Haven't really been able to be out hiring when we don't know what's going to be happening. We've done a little bit of that. We've had some phone interviews. So again, it's not just a switch that we can turn on. So trying to gauge far enough out, along with all the other factors that you mentioned, Tim.
Other, other comments or questions? Again, it's a unprecedented summer, so we understand there might be a little, little surprise there. But certainly open to any comments and questions.
Yeah, I think the idea of nature when you need it is maybe our, our central pillar at the moment. And, and we have to keep it up.
Nancy, you might have cut out. I'm not sure if your whole statement, we heard the nature comment.
It was just embellishment on that, yeah.
Yes, we agree. We've had, you know, on the upside, lots and lots and lots of positive comments about access to parks, trails, how important it is to have wonderful outdoor options. We continue to remind people also, you know, if they're concerned of crowding at any particular park, we have other parks, please, please go and visit them. In fact, we talked about over the summer, one of the things we could do is start to highlight different park areas and, you know, remind people what's there that they can do. We're sure most residents probably haven't been to every single park. So even just to drive by and do a visit or a tour, or good chance to ride on your bike on the Green Loop, visit every park, might be some things we can, you know, try to promote over, over this time. Well, go ahead and continue if you have certainly comments at the end, we can pick those up. Next week, Corky and I have a meeting with Peter Schiff at Brookins. I think they're starting to look at, they, they understand our lease is coming to a close there. There's been a long dialogue for a couple of years on what the county needs are. As you remember, we were working closely with them at one point in the possibility of creating a new, new facility. I think we've sort of selected our current path with our park grant application. And they're starting to look at their options also. So I think probably what I expected, you know, what's our future, you know, footprint need to be there. They certainly have needs for office space. The jail is on their agenda. So obviously, probably understanding what building space they might have free or available, or they could make plans with, is probably becoming a little more timely. So we'll report back after that. Some upsides, again, some good news. We have some exciting news on Crystal Lake Park a little bit later. Reminding folks, we have some wonderful work coming up at Blair Park. So like the City of Urbana, I think we're trying to promote, we are able to still do capital projects. And that's something that we think, while we're in this sort of downtime, we can work safely on those projects and really see these transformative operations happen, at least in those parks. So for folks kind of waiting or listening or wondering what they could think about over the summer, those two parks being easily upgraded and enhanced, we think is really positive. Just want to mention that Just wanted to mention that the UPDAC over the last two months, we've had tremendous support and attendance at our meetings. It's almost a rally attempt, you know, we, be a lot of reasons why people could find other diversions, but everybody's still attending and we're having great, great discussions and dialogue. And we'll share these, these thoughts about summer plans as, as they evolve. Did want to report on, let me look at my notes here. I think we have some information coming up on the museum grants. We're very excited about that. I'll just mention it now and then won't have to take the time we get to that agenda item. Want to thank staff for really working together. We came together with all the parties that might have a stake at something we could do for a museum grant. And we all put our best foot forward, considered a lot of interesting elements at various sites. And we've landed on a really terrific project, we think that'll help complete that north end of Crystal Lake Park. That come together as part of that, that plan up around the nature play area. So we're very excited about that. We all think that that's probably a very high need the district has and one that if, if we're fortunate enough, would really be a good partnership with IDNR benefits residents in Urbana. Last thing I wanted to, two things, wanted to mention, we did receive our support payment from Carl on the ITAP project. So we're very, very pleased. It's just an example of great partnership of, you know, two groups that could benefit from an improvement, coming together, activating a grant and the benefits of that. So we're just really pleased. We'd like to publicly thank them for their help on that. Then lastly, I did want to make some coalition updates. As you know, we've had, over the last five weeks, there's been a series of gun-related violence in Urbana and around the community. You know, we cannot allow this to normalize and to not talk about it. So again, I continue to feel compelled, you know, to talk about, there's been two young boys that have died in Urbana as a result of, you know, gun-related activities. No matter what the circumstances, it's, it's always a tragedy. The coalition hosted like a violence forum, whenever we have an incident of, you know, or a number of incidents, we try to rally everybody, get them together to talk about what we can do and what we should be doing. And again, the commitment is, is very, very strong there. We are concerned that the more positive things that we can offer throughout the community due to our situation in hoping to divert or engage people in different ways. But we are still trying some other methods. We'll work with neighborhoods, community leaders, really trying to get the word out and work, work this to the best of our ability to, to reduce the number of gun incidents. I should mention our shooting totals are exceeding last year. So we're, we're not in a good place and we need to keep reminding people of that. And lastly on that, I realize when you hear about it, it's, what do I do? How do I, you know, I, I believe you. I want to do something. The best thing I had recommended people, you know, stay in touch. We have a weekly, a monthly meeting for the community at large, anybody can tune into, where we talk about different solutions and, you know, peoples that are doing different things. But staying tuned, listening, caring, I think are still things, supporting the actions and activities of the park district staff that are working in recreation, I think is really critical. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions folks may have.
Tim, I just wanted to point out, when you talk about the coalition, I have a actual Zoom meeting tomorrow where I'm presenting on what the park district's been working on and kind of without giving away what's happening for the summer yet, because it's, we're not ready to deliver that message. I'll, I'll be presenting at that meeting.
Great. Appreciate it.
I'm just curious, there was a mention at the coalition, the last coalition meeting. You know, many groups have marched and have come together and there was some discussion about how the youth who are involved are not afraid of being arrested, not afraid of going to jail, not afraid of police officers. And also the lack of interest in certain activities within the community. Like, you know, they don't have, you know, some don't have role models and you're trying to, you know, meet a need. I'm just curious to know, from the park district standpoint, I mean, obviously there's still a lot of buy-in, but for the future, continue partnerships with other agencies and organizations. But does the park district still have that buy-in and hopes to, in the future, be able to offer programs, future programs to meet those needs of those diverse populations?
Yeah, that's a very good point, LaShonda. And, you know, I think the buy-in and the commitment is definitely there. In fact, I think at our district, we've actually increased it with both staff, direct interest. You know, I think a good example is the, we have a lot of good examples, you know, our work at Lerman Avenue Gardens, you know, promoting the peace poles and trying to do community outreach out in the parks, working with other community leaders right in the Crestview Park neighborhood area on different activities. Really whenever the coalition has an event or, you know, calls or needs help or volunteers, our staff are always there. Again, right now, we're somewhat limited in, you know, gathering and getting together. We have had, you're right, we've had different, what I call awareness marches, people gathering. We've had some anti-violence rallies. We had one two years ago at West Side Park. All of those type of things involve gathering and getting together, so it's difficult to do those things right now. But we're still finding ways to stay connected, to, to stay relevant and to offer what's important. I think the other side of that equation is making sure we have the facilities, you know, that we need to help do that. Champagne side is offering, you know, midnight basketball and working through different, you know, groups coming together. We've talked about it at, at Brookins. It's, it may not be the ideal facility for a number of reasons. We've, it's a little bit, you know, the building is somewhat porous and trying to keep control there. You know, it is, might be a little more challenged. We wouldn't say no to anything, but we're trying to work through those. And if, if people have any ideas, questions, or you're having conversations with anybody else and good ideas are coming up, please let us know. We definitely want to, you know, tap in and start working together. What I, where I've seen success is more of the collaboration where somebody has something, somebody has time, maybe somebody has a little money. You pull those things together and see what could happen. Couple of the big moves that we were just starting to get ready before the COVID outbreak was the idea of doing these, like STEM Saturday mornings where we bring people together and there's an intense learning opportunity, get lots of volunteers, a lot of youth together. I think I mentioned a couple of previous reports. We have a speaker come from New Orleans a couple of months ago when we were still competing physically and really did a highlight of a program that they were doing there and was willing to bring that expertise here. So again, that would really, something like that is a lot of our youth, a lot of the young kids. Certainly that older adult, that early teen, young teen, that's a little bit harder. You know, we, we struggle with that at our, our park district level. What can we offer? What do people want to do? Where will they go? That sort of thing. But I think staying steady, staying engaged. You know, it's very disappointing that we can't have Jet Road this year. I think that was a highlight of kind of that startup summer event kickoff that really got things moving in the right direction, at least in the neighborhoods in Urbana. And, and I know that Champagne is disappointed they can't do their events at Douglas Center as well. But we can't give up. We just, you know, continue to soldier on on this.
So you, you mentioned something about midnight basketball. How can that be possible under current circumstances?
Yeah, I'm sure right now that's not being held, but you know, probably the last year or so, year and a half, it's, it's been going in Champagne. Yes, all those activities unfortunately are curtailed right now, which by the way, makes things harder because you start to lose connections that you do have. Things I would encourage all of our staff to consider, and we do allow staff time for at any of the schools. So if staff are interested in doing that, or really any citizen can be involved with that. That's, that's something we could, you know, make UPDAC aware of or any of our groups, you know, that we work with. So those are some individual things that people could do to, to help, help, you know, try to make things better. Hearing no other questions? I think that, that's all I had to report on. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Tim. Moving on to the president's report, upcoming meetings, I think the dates weren't exactly right on the reminder sheet that went out. I think we have a June 2nd study session at where the aquatics action plan is. And I, I don't know how much action are we going to have in that plan if we're closing things down until July 31st. But and then on June 9th, we'll have annual action to annex territory into the park district and, and probably some bid awards along at that time. Anyway, you, you were about to chime in there, Corky?
Yeah, I was just going to say, our goal for that meeting is to let you know what we learned from the focus groups and some of the steps we plan to take as, as we move forward. So won't be as action-oriented at this moment, but future actions that will be taken. Just to kind of round out the study process that Jared did.
Sorry about those dates, Michael. Thanks for catching that.
That's okay. Those, those dates in June are pretty important to me. And I said, what? But anyhow, no, that's, that's all I had as a president's report. And so we, moving on to liaison reports, finance study group. We, we did meet at the beginning of the month and I think most of that has either been covered or, or will be here later in the meeting. And we're meeting again the next on the 29th of this month. So. And it's anything from the UPD's policy study group?
We met on March 3rd, but we have no future scheduled meetings. I'm sure we will have needed.
And Urbana Parks Foundation, although.
Well, Fred was at our, at our last meeting and filled us in, so nothing to add to that. We haven't met since then.
And is there anything to report from the UPDAC planning study group?
We met last August to finalize the first half of the year, the goals for that year, or for the first half of the year. And then we'll meet again in the future to discuss the later part of the year.
Okay, that takes us on to old business. And there was nothing removed from the consent agenda in the area of old business, so there's nothing to cover there. Under new business, we've already done item A. So we're now to item B, action on a resolution 2020-06, authorizing an IDNR public museum capital grant application.
Great. I think staff has an update that they want to share with the work that we've been doing on the grant proposal.
I think both Tim and Judy would like to talk a little bit about this. But as, as you mentioned in his director's report, we're looking at the area adjacent to the nature center for the museum grant. This is the same grant that funded the gateway to Bucie Woods as well as the boardwalk in Bucie Woods. Bucie Woods is part of our museum collection and so it qualifies. Initially, when we heard about the museum grant, we were thinking that we might target the, some installations in Meadowbrook Park. But in conferring further with DNR, learned that they really want to be directly associated with their museums. So something at the nature center or tied to its collection. And so in talking with Judy about their highest need, the one that, that rose quickly to the top is a new day camp pavilion. The current pavilion that's in the Northwoods doesn't have utilities. So we, you know, we use a hand washing station there, no restroom, so we use a portable toilet. It's obviously some distance from the nature center and then the weather becomes challenging to get kids back and forth. So we took a look at the work we'd done back in 2015 with Ratio, the time we were entertaining an Ozlight grant application. And that Ozlight grant program never got offered that year because of the state budget challenges. Unfortunately, we had done some work with the nature play concept in tandem with a pavilion up there as well as some parking to support that pavilion. So using that as our basis of design, we have a concept plan that's part of your board packet this evening that shows that intended pavilion, parking, also a council ring that we would like to include as well. And we would propose that we work over the next few weeks to get that application ready to do at the end of the month. But one of the requirements is that we have a board resolution to support it. This is a grant program that funds up to 100% of the grant cost for a project. So it's a, it's a, you know, a great program to apply to from, from that perspective. We know historically that they don't always award that full amount. In fact, I think a lot of our projects were, were partial award. And so as we develop our, our grant application, we'll think about things that might be second tier that, that we might drop if we don't get the full award. But we also want to have a competitive award. And so we've been having discussions with Corky, Judy, Katie, Tim about the possibility of having a, a, a small local match that will come out of the museum fund. I believe Katie feels like that, that fund could provide some, some local match and/or be somewhere we could draw from if we get a partial award and feel like there's elements that we still want to do that, that are fully awarded by the grant program. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that, that grant. Judy, did you want? Go ahead, Nancy.
Twenty by twenty-four, how does that compare with the size of, say, the, the newest pavilion that we have at Meadowbrook out by the windmill?
Right now, what we're planning on is a facility that would support eight picnic tables. That helps. So it's about probably the same size as those pavilions at Meadowbrook. We, the current pavilion, the day camp, has six tables. But we, we feel like we want to be able to accommodate a slightly bigger group. It could also be a rental pavilion. Does that help?
Yeah, I was thinking it was, if anything, too small.
Yeah, right. And I guess I was also curious about, I'm sure you thought through it, but if you can help us think through, not normally you pick children up from the Northwoods Pavilion, but the day camp ends there when you have lots of traffic at the pool. So can you talk us through that flow of, there's a lot more activity up top if you will?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, currently we, we do the pickup and drop off up top. And Judy has folks that have to park their car and come to the nature center to, to check the kids in and out. So, so nothing would change from that perspective. Is that correct, Judy?
For the three o'clock pickup, they're picked up at the day camp building at the Northwoods Pavilion. And that's about 20, we estimate that's about 20 vehicles roughly, because there's a lot of carpooling and there's a lot of parents with more than one child in camp. So moving it up toward the nature center, we would have to designate parking for that pickup time. Parents oftentimes come a little bit earlier so that they can sit in with the circle time at the end of day. And then they also like to have that time to talk to the staff about how their kid has been doing in camp. So it's not just a simple drive up and throw their kid in the, the car. They actually have to get out of the car, sign their kid out. The remainder of the kids in camp are either in our half-day preschool camp or they are staying for extended camp. And by the five o'clock time, the parking lot isn't quite as busy over the dinner hour time.
And we're taking that into account when we're talking about the additional parking spaces and providing that, we're thinking of an ARM-type system that closes the parking space for that specific purpose. So that's all things that we're thinking about in the planning.
Just one more thing to add to about that. One of our, I'd say perennial challenges was operating from the Northwoods Pavilion, needing to close off the park road or try to redirect traffic or limit access. So one of the, one of the best benefits is that that wouldn't have to happen again if we could find a way to relocate that activity. Certainly that whole site and the. Certainly, that whole site and the amenities there, you know, have its limitations or primitive characteristics. So it would be a huge upgrade, and it would eliminate another, what I would call, major issue problem ongoing that we've had at Crystal Lake Park, particularly in the summer when there's a lot of the traffic. People like to drive through the park, see what's going on. So that that would be a nice addition.
There's also the issue of flooding in that area, the Northwoods Pavilion. There have been some summers where we were not able to use the pavilion during the month of June because of standing water still in the park. We do hate losing the location because of the trees and and the kind of unique space that the kids have for that. But we also recognize that there would be more use of Bucie Woods in the friendship group with the kids up farther up closer to the nature center. As well as, as Derek said, during inclement weather, we can move them much quicker into the nature center if weather turns severe than than otherwise.
Just a point of clarification on the draft plan that you all have, that that size, you know, that was 2015, thinking we're going to have an updated drawing from Ratio on Friday, and I expect it will be bigger.
Did you look at other locations, say, maybe further north and a little bit west?
When we were doing the pool project, there was some talk of putting a pavilion over on the area where we now park cars. And I would be concerned about having that that close to where kids would have to be. In order to get to the nature center, they would have to walk all the way around the parking lot. We don't allow the kids to walk through the parking lot for safety reasons as well. Nancy, you're muted.
Barely do two things at the same time. Still east of the nature center, but further north to the back. Is that flat enough? Is there enough space back there?
Oh, you mean in the field area?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll let Derek talk about that.
Yeah, we actually anticipate that the new location will be different than currently shown in the plan. The existing loop path that provides access to parade play is a little bit further south than than shown in in the conceptual drawing, and so we'll need to move it more to the north side of the field.
Yeah, that seems to be more more sensible because it gets the kids further away. I mean, I'm always worried about kids close to parking lots. And moving them, moving them further to the north and and a little bit more to the west, but not but still staying east of the nature center seems to me to be maybe a safer safer space. And it, I mean, I'm not very good at visualizing things, but I would think that it would, where it is, would in in some ways detract from the nature playground. And if you have it more in the background, it's it's there. It's
I I think part of it is, too, is looking at it from like a weekend rental facility where people would have a birthday party and maybe utilize the nature center, but also may have a birthday party and utilize the pool. It's a good, especially on the weekends, it could be a good gathering, meet here and then go here.
And what's the bathroom situation for somebody who would rent that facility on a weekend? The nature center is not open on Sundays. Is that correct?
At this point, we haven't discussed how we would run to that facility. Currently, when somebody is renting the campfire, we require a staff person in the building, which enables them to have access to the bathrooms as well as water. I would expect the same with this at this point. But there's also a restroom over at the pool and outside restroom that could be used as well. We have also, Nancy, we've also erected a fence, a wooden fence along the parking drive into to the nature center where the nature playscape is, because we had some parents who had concerns about kids running across the parking lot in that. But I agree, the location specifically will be will be decided as we move forward.
Good, that's great. Just summary consideration of it seems to me like a good idea.
I think Derek mentioned, but you know, this is an older drawing, which really all we had that could be used to convey the the concept and get and get the idea across. But we are fine tuning the locations. And again, complimenting Uptech, you know, they continue to encourage us to look at creating comprehensive facilities, areas you can do more than one thing. So this site would really do that, as Judy mentioned, could go to the woods, see the building, certainly the pool and those facilities are nearby. So it really creates a new destination in Crystal Lake Park. Hopefully, that will be used year round, or at least, you know, throughout the year.
Yeah, we are looking at it to be at least a three, if not a four season use so that we can program it for, you know, things such as out prowls and storytelling and so on.
Well, I'm happy to make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-06 to support a museum capital grant application for the Native Forest Nature Center.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or further questions? Hearing none, I would call a, do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
And Mashanda?
Aye.
Meredith? I think I, did I hear you, Meredith? Oh, okay, it was quiet. And Nancy?
Aye.
You're muted. Okay. I vote aye as well, so that carries unanimously. And moves us on then to Action to Award Crystal Lake Park Rehabilitation Project.
Well, I think you all know staff's been probably waiting for this day for maybe three or four years. So without any further ado, we'll have staff walk us through the the bid proposals.
I'll start with a little background and then go into more of the specific project information and bidding information before I introduce representatives from ERA who have just recently joined us tonight. Staff began a formal planning process for the project over five years ago that included a significant amount of public input and staff analysis and research. That final rehabilitation plan was completed in 2017, and it included three main areas of concern, first being water quality and then shoreline restoration and public recreation. This phase of the rehabilitation was also part of the, one of the main pillars, the placemaking pillar in our recently completed strategic plan. And in November of 2018, the board awarded design work to ERA due to their expertise on similar projects that staff had researched during those preliminary planning phase. And the final scope developed for bidding incorporated those three main areas of concern into the project. For the recreational amenities, an OzLad application was awarded in early 2019. And that provides $400,000 in state grant funding for a portion of the Lake Ed work, and then the new recreational amenities that includes accessible stone fishing, outcroppings, a new playground, pavilion replacement, it's a small pavilion located near the Carl campus, a family game area around the large pavilion, a new boat dock, and a kayak launch. The base project also includes a number of items to address water quality and the shoreline restoration. These include the revised makeup water feature, floating wetland islands within the sediment basin. I'd say approximately 90 to 95% shoreline rehabilitation, stabilization, and native planting. And that's including work on the northern island, outlet structure modifications, and vegetation management for three years. We've included seven alternates on the project. ERA and staff reviewed the options and selected alternates two through five as part of our recommendation tonight based on the effectiveness in dealing with one of our main project goals being water quality. Alternate two is selective dredging, a portion of the lake that was found to contain the deepest amount of sediment, and that's just west of the basin bridge. And alternates three, four, and five are the hydrodynamic separators that we had talked to you all previously about to treat water and remove the suspended solids before entering the lake. And these suspended solids are carriers of nutrients that turn fertile at the lake and produce our nuisance weed and algae growth. The remaining not selected alternates, one, six, and seven, can be separated as a future phase of lake work and reviewed as less effective than the alternates two through five to address the water quality concerns. And during the review of alternate staff was also conscious of our tiered approach to improvements at Crystal Lake Park that was presented during the discussion of refinancing bonds. And that was a table that had priorities of however much funding was left, what projects we would move next to. Adding those alternates two through five still provides enough remaining funding based on our previous received estimates to continue with other improvements at the park that would include the one-way road transition and repair and the local match for an upcoming ITEP grant for that final connection of the multi-use path along Broadway Avenue. Getting more into the the bid, the plans for the project were distributed beginning on January 31, and we had a total of 34 plan holders. Due to our COVID-19 restrictions, we had postponed the opening. I think Derek had mentioned earlier in the meeting, we believe that postponing the bid opening actually ended up resulting in the project receiving greater interest from from bidders. We had a couple contractors become interested in bidding during that extension, and we began to reach out and ask questions when they had previously been silent. Bids were opened through a public virtual connected process held at ERA's office in Champaign with four companies submitting bids. With the four selected alternates, Stark is the low bidder, and we are recommending for award tonight in the amount of $2,475,418, and additionally recommending a 15% contingency that would amount to $371,313. Getting into the funding for the project, the total, including contingency, brings the expenses to $2,846,731. And we have set aside project funds, beginning with a 2016 general fund transfer for use within Crystal Lake Park, and additionally using funds from 2017, 18, and 19 capital budgets that we had been planning and set aside each year, including those refinance bond dollars within the 2019A capital improvement bond that the board had just authorized the refinancing late last year. And then, of course, our funds from the OzLad grant. And you can see within the memo the how those, each of those funds are split up to provide the total revenue for the project. With that, I'll note that Jake Wolf and Aaron Pandy are here from ERA, and they're here to answer any questions and provide any comments if they wish.
Is it your opinion that we got good competitive bids?
Yeah, I think that I think that the bid results were were pretty good. We have four bidders, which which is, I was pretty pleased with. Jake, do you have anything you'd add to that?
I will say that the bidders were all very good contractors who I would who I know have worked for the park district in the past. I know many of the subconsultants or subcontractors that that they had have also worked with the park district in the past, so I thought it was positive. Positive group of people paying attention to this project as opposed to some some person who nobody knows coming from out of town and trying to lowball something or 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 put the prices out of whack. I know the Stark obviously was the was the low bidder with all the alternates. They've done numerous projects, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they've done several projects with the park district. And they have a subcontractor, if I'm not mistaken, Aaron Cardno, right?
Yes.
Who is, who Aaron has worked with quite extensively up in the Chicago area on very similar projects. So I think those are probably the two big ones as far as the the contractors working on the project, and and I would certainly recommend they be selected based on their experience and and expertise in the in the area of the Crystal Lake Park.
Yep, thanks, Jake. Two of those projects that they had worked on recently was actually the sediment removal project from the sediment basin that occurred, I think, three years ago, and then they were the contractor for the ITEP project as well in Crystal Lake Park.
If we're ready for a motion, I'm happy to make the motion.
I think we are ready, probably.
We award the base bid and alternates two, three, four, and five for the Crystal Lake Rehab Project in the amount of $2,475,418 and a construction contingency of 15% in the amount of $371,313 to Stark Excavating Inc. of Champaign, Illinois.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we need to do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 Aye. So that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting, and hooray. It's been a long time coming. I hope this will be, as a book in, some really good news about Crystal Lake Park.
Yes.
Amen.
I just want to add, I guess, one closing bid, you know, Stark addition to working with us, they've done virtually every project like this around town, the ones you're familiar with. They're wrapping up a project for Champaign Park District right now, and they've done a lot of university work on the Boneyard, and so it gives us reassurances that they've had success in that that sort of arena. And then, obviously, you know, to be able to to move forward with this project, now we're just extremely excited. It's been, it has indeed been a long time coming, and I think the park's going to really look like a brand-new place. Well, not a brand-new place, but a much better place when we're all done.
Yeah, and I will say, too, to add to that, Derek, I've worked with Stark myself on projects similar to that. And I know Aaron's worked with some of the subcontractors they have, so it, they, yeah, these are not new, so that's good, too.
Yeah, I've worked with Cardno and Homer. Homer Tree is doing the tree removal, and I've worked with both of them on numerous projects. So.
And I've worked with both of them on numerous projects. So.
I also want to give Jake and Aaron a lot of credit for guiding us through this design process. Staff had a lot of questions as we moved through it. And it was reassuring to know that they'd done a lot of this work themselves and had a, an answer in three or four times when they've done just what we'd asked about everywhere else where they work up north. So it's reassuring to have them on the design team and have a lot of confidence in their design work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and thank you for joining us this evening. All right, are we ready to move on then to item D, review of draft lease agreement with the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district?
Yes, I think you all have the report in front of you. Little background, staff has been working with the sanitary district for a number of years on anticipating an update to our lease arrangement. Wanted to thank the sanitary district staff. They've really done a great job. Rick in particular really took this part on himself. I think it really kind of stemmed from his very positive relationship with the park district. He actually kind of took it on to work with their association to get some legal changes in place that would allow them to have longer leases and combined leases and other aspects of the work that was in that, the legal aspect. But again, what we're trying to do is move away from separate leases on all the properties that we leased from the sanitary district, roll it into one lease. We're looking at longer time periods. As I noted there in item two, the Hickory Street facility, that would be the date that would carry us to the 2052 date. I think there's some built-in opportunities if something changes to reutilize land to make the park district whole, basically pay us back for any investments. Primarily the, probably the most important, more recent building is the metal storage at the Hickory site. We've been at the Ambux site, of course, for many, many years and have enjoyed being at that site. But I wanted to give the board a chance at least to look at the terms. I'd recommend that we put it on for action at the June meeting. If there was something that, you know, concerned the board, we could take it back to the sanitary district, see, see if they were able to amend it. I'm assuming this is their property, so they kind of can create the lease approach. There was nothing in the lease that I found objectionable or didn't have an opportunity to comment on. Derek, I don't know if you have those images handy. I know, we know the sites really well, but it might be helpful to remind the board what properties we're talking about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Can we see this? Okay. Yeah. So obviously here's the Hickory Street site that Tim referenced with our storage facility, indoor and then outdoor to the north. The agreement we worked on preserves the capacity to have a future connection with a bridge across the saline there for our trail connection pathway. Unless you all are quite familiar with Ambux Park. And of course up here we have the Perkins Road site that we leased from the sanitary district where we're completing restoration work in the final phase in this area. Our parks, lands are shown as well, Judge Weber, our Kerr Street facility. Here's their, their, their main operating campus, the northeast plant. So a lot of, a lot of partnership taking place in Northeast Urbana here. If we've got a zoom in of the Hickory Street property here and noting the future bike path up this way, outdoor storage, potential lay down area if we ever need a lay down area after a major storm or some sort of a, you know, disaster, we have a lay down area for trees if we need to put them there before we can process them. This is an area that we have used infrequently. We, we do mow it and this is an area where the sanitary district is proposing putting in some solar panels. We, we have no need for it, so we're happy to see it go, go to a good use like that. This is just another aerial, shows the overall campus area. Tim, was there anything else you uncovered?
No, thank you Derek. As it was noted, you know, that's quite a bit of land. Again, we're very grateful. Each of the sites are very critical to us and offer something very different and unique for residents in Urbana. So we really should celebrate our relationship. Not necessarily every local utility offers those kind of arrangements. So kudos to the passports and staff that, you know, got us in this position. I know I've worked with four executive directors at the sanitary district. All of them have been amazingly open and very, very workable with the park district. So we really appreciate our relationship. If there's any questions, we could take that back. But if not, the plan would be to bring it back for approval at the June board meeting.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I think that the citizens of Urbana don't have much of an understanding of how much help we've gotten over the years and how cooperative the sanitary district has been. And they're kind of like a silent partner of ours. And they've really contributed a great deal to the park district in Urbana, for which I certainly am extraordinarily grateful. And I think the citizens, if they knew about it, would be as well.
Thank you for that statement. Hopefully more people will hear that and know that.
Well, I have a question. Sorry, I have a question. Tim, is the Patterson Parklet site covered by this lease?
It's not Katie. We haven't really begun to dig into that situation. You know, it's a little murky on the clarity. Obviously these are the more like important sites, but thank you for mentioning that. That's something we probably do want to loop back, determine who really does own it, what their plans and intent, you know, it may be something they don't need or want, or maybe we don't necessarily want or need it. But yes, good follow-up point on that. Thank you.
Wow, just echoing Nancy's comments. It's also been an extraordinary long time that the two agencies have had this kind of relationship. That goes all the way back to my first involvement just even using the park district a long time ago. So I mean, what is now Ambux Park has been active, I'm thinking more than 50 years now, isn't it? Or it's, it's got to be very close to that. So indeed, the citizens of Urbana have benefited greatly from, from the generosity of the sanitary district in this regard.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Whoops. Wow, I had myself muted. So pardon me. We will be taking that, the, the lease agreement up and at our June regular meeting. And that drops us down to action on new business removed from the consent agenda. And there was none. So we're to comments from commissioners. Anyone wanting to make any further comments tonight?
Yes, I'd like to thank all of the citizens who took time to inform us of their views on the, on the culling of the geese in the park. It's obvious that we a very polite exchange all the way around, which I am very thankful for. And I think that if the citizens will trust us, that we will do a good job. And I think that the amount of work that was done ahead of time by staff maybe wasn't highlighted enough. And I think that if people would read some of the, could read some more of the documentation that we have. I'd also to thank people especially for paying attention to this and letting us know how they feel about things, whether they agree with us or not.
I would also like to thank staff and really appreciate bringing in IDNR and the folks just really walk us through the process. I thought that was extremely helpful and appreciated that thoughtful approach.
Well, I'd say, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Lashonda.
I just, I also want to echo, thank you all for your continuous hard work on this project. Obviously we, you know, we, we try our best to work together, you know, with, with other agencies, the public, et cetera. I do think maybe in the future, I know we talked about the way that surveys are distributed through, you know, email or however you guys circulate surveys, that maybe in the future that we relook at that. Just make sure that maybe there's something that might have been a miss, you know, where we're making sure that we're reaching more people some kind of way, that way we be, or allow more time. I mean, we've had several public meetings, lots of information that have gone out. I don't know if that's something that we can brainstorm, how to do something different that you haven't done, you know, besides signs or emails or media. I don't know, we circulate postcards, I don't know. But then we get into costs, we get into who will read the postcard. So there's a lot of pros and cons, but I definitely think that's something that maybe in the future we need to relook at how the surveys are, are sent out.
Well, I too would like to thank all those who took the time to provide their opinions. So as Roger so aptly pointed out earlier, there seems to be, this is a bipolar situation and a very emotional one. And not an easy decision for us as a board to have taken. But I'm also proud of just how much time and effort the staff has put into working up and preparing to, to this. Not preparing for this specifically, but, but dealing with this, the issue of the overpopulation of the geese and trying to do it in a responsible way all along. And as we are now on a threshold of making some enormous improvements in Crystal Lake, I think now is indeed the time for us to move forward with controlling the goose population. So that when we come out the other end and some of these developments actually get grown up, we are going to be, I hope, successfully be less likely of needing to do this again.
I think too that it might've looked like we were, we came to a pretty quick conclusion about this. And I think maybe what people don't realize is that we have been listening to and dealt with the monies that have been spent. So it wasn't something that we've just decided at the spur of the moment. This has been a long running problem for the park district. And the commissioners and the staff have been dealing with it for a long time. The public, I mean, and which is, you know, the public isn't necessarily not aware of all, of all that we've done, but it was something that we've looked at and thought about for a long time, even though it may not have looked like it tonight.
Well, let me just interject with that. There has been a significant amount of public input for several years through this whole process. It just, the public is not a monolithic thing. And yes, I understand the point of it would be better had we reached everybody earlier in the process, but that's also enormously difficult to do.
I, I also think it's important for people to understand that for the staff and for us, this was the last resort. This, nobody, nobody finds any joy in killing geese or, or it's not something we were looking forward to doing. It's just that we, we had run out of all other options to reduce the goose population and people need to know that.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I wanted, I wondered if we could sort of take out, if you will, Howie Shine's comments. And I think the other one, as far as I could tell, I don't, I don't know who it was, but it was, it was a long comment about goose and geese in the, in the second survey. I thought it was extraordinarily informative to you of the park. We would see more than just the geese. We would see a lot of, a lot of wildlife. Do you remember that one? Yeah. And I think that if we, if we took that information out, that might help people understand a bit better because I thought it was, it was, it was sort of a factual presentation. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't emotional either direction. And I thought the information provided in it was a lot of things that I hadn't thought about before, but after reading it made perfect sense to me. And I think it might help people feel a bit better about what we're doing. That, that and Howie's, for example, his comparison of nature preserve and a essentially a city park.
At least at my end, Nancy, you're, you've broken up and stopped completely. I don't know. Are others hearing her?
No.
Oh, okay. I'll just send Tim a, an email or bandwidth.
I guess I just would add, this has been, you know, certainly one of the most challenging things that I've been involved in here at the park district. And it's difficult to hear the comments that we have. And you know, a lot of people, I, I knew that there'd be close friends and leaders in the community that, that would be challenged by this. It, it really comes down to a personal value. And there, there's no right and wrong with that. It's just, for a lot of people, it's just that was probably most disheartening was that we tried to provide a lot of good information about what we've done, but it wasn't always received. And it was clear from some of the comments that people weren't fully familiar with what, with what we've done so far. But that just means we need to try harder. And one of the things I've, I've thought we should do is a Q and A to address all the questions that came in where there was a lack of understanding and provide that and, and just continue to provide more information. So when I said, you know, this is far from done, I just know that between now and, and late June, early July, there's going to continue to be a lot of dialogue about this. And I want to be prepared with good information for folks as best we can.
I think another maybe positive comparison. Another positive comparison, it depends on, you know, where you stand on these sort of issues. But, you know, Arlington Park and the university went through this a number of years ago with, you know, some of the deer culling. They were losing a lot of vegetation and important things in the garden and also just, you know, wild, trees and, you know, wildflowers out in the woods. I think at least reports I've heard that it has helped. Certainly it's something you need to stay committed to. But there, there can be a positive story at the end of, you know, when we get things completed at, at the park and people can see that there's still geese there and they're happier and hopefully healthier. Again, that's up each individual's perspective, but I would hope at least people would give that a chance to wait and see.
Okay, are there any other final commissioner comments to make? Hearing none, and I believe we have completed our agenda. And I will declare us adjourned and thank you to everybody. This has been a not easy meeting for anyone.